Okay, it is now 6:00 PM. I would like to call this meeting to order. Do I have a motion to open an executive session for the Andy Overstreet workshop tonight?
Senator.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments before we get started? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of opening the session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in an open session. I would like to notify you that we are in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, and I would like to notify you that the district is taping this meeting for the accuracy and preparing the minutes. And I would personally like to welcome our friend from Pelean. Thanks for coming over. Yeah, he shows a lot of good interest in the district. We appreciate that. At this time, board members, you have an agenda before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Senator.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments about the agenda? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and it is unanimous. At this time, item 3.0 is Board Workshop, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gregory Little, who will preside from this point forward. And we just want to welcome Andy. We want to welcome him to back to Lexington. We enjoyed this session last time, and I think it's, the leadership training is wonderful, so we appreciate that. So welcome.
So, good evening, everybody. Again, I appreciate you being here. If you recall, after the November election, we talked about having the December workshop being really some of our legal stuff to get the new board up to speed about the issues associated with being a board member, you know, legal pitfalls and those kinds of things. And we had that last month. This month is really about what happens when you have new members of a group, and developing that group, and moving forward, and working together, and communicating, how best do we want to do those things, and that kind of stuff. So, tonight's going to be about development. It's going to be about team building and leadership building. I think that's also great, all great descriptors of what tonight is going to be. And we are, we're really blessed tonight to have Dr. Andy Overstreet here with us. Dr. Overstreet has been a superintendent, or was a superintendent for 22 years in both Virginia and North Carolina. Worked at the Friday Institute, the William Friday Institute at NC State for 15 years, and is also married to a really dynamic professor. Unfortunately, they're NC State fans, but there's absolutely nothing I can do about that. Nobody's perfect. But we have, we have a great opportunity to have him here tonight. If you also recall, Dr. Overstreet assisted us with our strategic planning process as well, and really helped shepherd us through that process. And, and really, he says we give him too much credit, but it has really pushed our thinking about what does it mean to empower each child to design the future? And what does that look like? And the life and work skills, the power skills that eventually came from that. And it's just, I've known, I've known Dr. Overstreet since 2006 as a young assistant superintendent, and I've just really been blown away by his work ethic and ethos and commitment to children, and being able to work to make that happen for kids. And so, I'm glad you're here tonight.
Thank you.
And we've got, we've got a great three hours ahead of us. Now, I will tell you, I've looked at the agenda. It's going to be a packed agenda. So, what we need about an hour and a half in, we're going to, I'm just going to have Cheryl, if you'll call a quick break about an hour and a half in, we'll look at that. But we probably only five to seven minutes-ish, and then, so we'll kind of take an opportunity to stretch your legs a little bit. But there's going to be a lot of, a lot of interaction here as well tonight. So, I'm going to, without further ado then, because I know we've got a busy agenda.
We do.
Welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Very kind, and it's good to be back. I enjoyed working with this board in 2016 or 2017.
2017, I think.
Yeah, we all did some fine work, accomplished a lot. And enjoyed working with your staff and team here. Yesterday, I was up at Meadows Glen and Mr. Toonbill, Toon, what a wonderful principal there at that middle school. Got to meet some kids for, what, half hour or so? Some of the teachers, got to talk to people, you know, it was just so much fun, and I thought, whoa. If this school is representative, and I think it probably is, you guys have a really good school district here. And what makes a great school district? Great teachers, great staff, right? Great superintendent, and really good board members that work with a strong team together. Well, I, I know about half the board is new, or new to the board, I guess, in this round. And, so you don't really know me, and I don't know you. And I'm not going to ask you for a life history, but if you just, so I can just have something to associate you with, like, I'm a tennis player, I'm a dentist.
I'm a professional bodybuilder.
Okay. All right, all right, Mr. Powers. The power lift, I can, I can go with that, that kind of association.
So, I'm Brett Powers, been in the community for 15 years. Grew up here in Richland County, went off to school, came back to Lexington County. We've got three kids in the district.
Do you know who your mom?
Well, yeah, I went to Wake Forest.
Oh, good.
I'm a physician here, who's chief medical officer at Lexington Medical Center. I was on the board from 2012 to 2016, and then ran the OTC in 2018.
Lovely.
Yeah, it's going to be bad.
Nice, great. My oldest son is in health, long-term healthcare management.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he worked at some point in a hospital, and he decided he would do the other side of it, because of this, he said, the doctors were awful bossy.
Yeah, they are.
I hope not.
We have the biggest, we have the biggest nursing home in the state here in Lexington. This is the ninth biggest in the southeast. And that's Lexington Extended Care.
So, you're the biggest employer in the district? I mean, in this county?
Yeah.
Unquestionably.
Yeah, we employ.
And the school system's probably the second.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Kyle Guyton, oh, I guess we don't have that.
That sounds like our mayor.
Born and raised here, graduated Lexington High School a little while ago, and went off to College Charleston, got my BS in psychology, got a, went on to MUSC for my doctorate, and then came back here with my wife, and did our pediatric, did my pediatric residency. And we started a practice after residency, and we've kind of grown since, multiple sites throughout the state. And three kids in the district, 12, 11, 8, and seventh grade, sixth grade, third grade, so we're, we're learning. Hopefully getting a little better every day, but learning.
Well, they should be a piece of cake. You've got that psychology background.
Yeah, well.
You know, you're giving the books out.
Classes don't, abnormal psych doesn't prepare you for a sixth-grade girl, so.
That whole chapter got left out of most psych books, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I never had a dollar of that.
So, the sixth-grade boys?
Yeah.
Is Kara?
Jada Garas. I was born and raised here. I have two kids in Gilbert Schools, seventh grader and eleventh grader, and I'm a court reporter.
Any special hobbies or interests, or?
Nothing.
You're not a power builder?
No, hardly.
Okay. They intimidate you in any way, so.
Born and raised here as well, attended Gilbert High School, New Brad College, got a degree in instrumental music, band director for 16 years at high school. Came back to my hometown, and served as an assistant principal and a principal for 25 years. Retired, retired farmer, 40 years, retired musician, I'm just retired.
You just retired. Everything's, it's all in the past, yeah.
I had two children that went through the system, and one's in education, and the other's in some kind of technology. I can't even tell you what he does. Anyway.
I have one son in technology, and I can't tell you. I know it has something to do with satellites and GI, yes, GI, ground satellites. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, Bruce lives in Omaha, but he works for a firm in Houston. I don't know how that works. He works at home.
I know Omaha, some part of my life, I grew up out in a place called Grand Island, Nebraska, on the Platte River.
Yeah.
Up in, you've seen the movie Dancing with the Wolves. Looks, that's where I was. Well, I wasn't Dancing with the Wolves, but, and had, a grandfather had a farm down southeast of Nebraska, some of my best days in summer, which was spent down there on that farm. Beautiful cousins, my cousins, yeah. And Mike, I know Mike.
I've been here.
Yeah. Anything changed about you, Mike?
I quit working altogether. I don't do anything. I hold down the big red chair every day.
Good. So, you have lots of time to be pensive and be very reflective about life, what's going on in the school system.
Very philosophical.
Yeah, okay. I thought that maybe about you, yeah. Amber, anything new?
The only thing new at our house is that we're all game clubs, lifelong game clubs, year cheering against Clemson, and I have a, my son is a freshman at Clemson, so I was cheering four Clemson last night, which was, you know, hard to switch gears, but we're sending them a lot of money, so we're cheering.
And very gracious of you, you know, to pull.
This was a good year to switch sides, but, you know, we're right there, so.
Indeed, indeed. We have, we have, in our family, different people have gone to different schools, and my, my wife has degrees from Wake Forest, UVA, and NC State, and she's a type professor from NC State. And we had, we had a lot of trouble about, well, not trouble, but misunderstandings about who we were going to pull for at any particular game, you know? I thought we had it all worked out. This was 25 years ago. And I was sitting in the stadium at the UVA one time, watching the football game. She was pulling for both teams. One was NC State and another was UVA.
That's because she's a winner, either way.
She, yeah, she's covered.
She's a winner.
But the guy behind us reached behind me, the ball over me, and tapped her on the shoulder and said, like, just who are you pulling for at this game? But we were sitting in the UVA section, and she took her hands off, and she had degrees in all those, paid good money to them, she wants football done. I went and got a hot dog. Came back, I said, what, our agreement? She said, what agreement was? You pulled for the home team, where we went, where we were. And she said, I changed my mind. Okay. Madam Chair, are you, do you have new endeavors in your life?
No, none. Same old, same old.
No sitting in the red chair, being.
No, no. We're coming out of our busy season, so no. We have not been sitting in any red chairs. I wish I had a red chair to sit.
The busy season, yes. Thank you. Thank all of you again. Thank you for coming tonight. I know you're all here. So, you already had a couple, one, a legal workshop, and.
So, in December, we had a legal workshop, and then in February, they'll go through the School Boards Association.
So, you're getting, you're getting a full, heavy dose of it. That's good to kind of get it all, and show up for your time, because then you can interrelate things and issues that might make you help make more sense out of some, certain things, especially for the newer board members. Well, a little bit about, about me, other than knowing this fine young gentleman here for 12 years, yeah, which is, which is, which is a good thing, of course. I remember when you called me and said, I think I'd like to be a superintendent someday.
I do remember that.
Because he knew I'd had a lot of experience at it, and I was at the institute, and was a part of the College of Education in state. And then there was this silence. I said, well, I think you can be. I think you can do that. You've got all the making. Tremendous. And too many years after that, off he went. So, I had all the traditional work in, in education, and I came back mostly as teaching. And I was not an educator by training in design initially, economist and political scientist, and then kind of got back and didn't know what to do, and evolved into education through teaching. I love teaching, loved the kids, did friends playing, and other kinds of jobs in central office. And then, one day, my superintendent said, there's, I think there's an opening down this mountain school district down in that western Allegheny Mountains of Virginia, and I think you ought to pop for it. And I said, why would I do that? Because I've been working for him and watching him, and I thought, that's a hard job, really hard job. But I went down, had a little intro conversation with him, and ended up down there. And I ended up working in four districts, three in Virginia and one in North Carolina, the county of Surrance Chapel Hill, for 22 years as a superintendent. And then the dean at NC State called one day and said, you're going to die in office. And I said, okay, what do I do about it? I have a wonderful opportunity for you here at NC State. They're opening a new technology innovation research facility, or going to open it, need to build it, called the Friday Institute, named after Bill Friday, who was the lead component of the university system in North Carolina many years ago. So, I agreed to do it, and developed it, and taught classes in the college, mostly leadership, training principles, superintendent, things of that nature. And I thought I'd do it a few years, and ended up staying at the university almost 15 years. So, learned a lot, learned a lot doing that, and had a lot of fun. So, tonight, it'll all be conversational. There will be, this will be disappointing to some of you, I think. There will be no high ropes experiences, or any other such tactile kinds of encounters.
Trust balls.
That should make you, because the only time people said, we're going to do team building exercises, right away, are you familiar with the high ropes, the low ropes courses? These are for teams that work together day in, day out, and have to learn to trust each other.
We had one at Rydell High School for several years.
Did you do one as a board, or?
Um, no.
We can make that happen.
We just looked at it, but I don't think it's impacted anymore. We looked at it.
And team building is probably one of the more impactive kinds of experiences that you can have. But it's also kind of scary, there's some scary parts of it. I mean, not, not that you get physically hurt or injured necessarily, it's just, it's so unlike, unless you've been in military training, it's so unlike anything else you've ever done. It's, it's, you know, and depending on other people sometimes to hold you up and make sure you don't fall out of the tree, that kind of thing. We're not going to do that, see, I'm not going to. And you're not going to, there will be no death by PowerPoint tonight, movies, I think. No, no, it's, it's, we, I worked with your superintendent on designing your agenda, and it's conversational, because we think that's probably most beneficial, and it'll also be yet another experience to be able to hear each other in tone and substance both about your perspectives and viewpoints as we go forward. So, I'll be merely your facilitator, and maybe occasionally helping promote challenge or question you sometimes. So, I'm not going to really present things to you. In fact, most of the things we'll work from are things that you are familiar with, some of which you've already devised. And it'll be an opportunity to review those and share with each other what we think they mean, what meaning they carry for the board as a whole, and, and about going forward with the structure. You've designed some, what I would call, structures to support your governance and policy work. One set of them are right over there, your shared values. Review those, review your protocols, and a few other things. But I think we can do all this easily within, within our time that's allotted. So, that, so the framework is to enhance your teamwork, and, and also your productivity as a board. When I worked at the board a year or so ago, you indicated you were interested in being, actually, it says, better than the average board. And we can, this is called, is high-impact boards, high-impact type boards. And I hope, I think you have done that, and I think you're, I hope you're still interested in being there. We'll redo that list, I've got it in here somewhere, about what does it mean to be a high-impact board, what distinguishes them from, I forget, kind of, okay, but ordinary, everyday, the mill, you know, kind of. So, that's the framing, is to enhance your teamwork, and hear with each other, but most importantly, to review the structures that you have designed, and you may want to enhance those, or modify them some, and, or add to them. And this is, this is a good night to do that. You can do it going forward. You, and that'll happen. You find yourselves, because I won't be, you know, around every board member to say, well, you all are not doing such a good job on disposition or something, you know? So, you are self-monitoring yourselves, and when you design protocols, and shared values and things, and just ways to do your work together, there's, there's no, there are no protocol police, no shared values police. It's, you are the designer and the police, so it's self-enforcement, okay? And I think, so, and you, you've lived with your values and protocols for over a year at this point, so you've gotten a good, I don't know how much self-assessment you've done at any of this point, but this would be a good opportunity if you want to question some of that. Okay, I think you, sure, I'll make sure, everybody got a little packet there, they're not, so, any questions about the agenda before we start? I didn't speak to it specifically, but the things I mentioned are the things we're going to address. I have, I have some grounders for you. These are my rules, so, as a facilitator, and, and there, these are things, most of these things you learn in kindergarten, or at least by the third, fourth grade. And I think we're all high-performing adults here, so you've probably operated by these kind of things already. But just, just as a kind of a little review, and the one in particular I would know is the fifth one. So, when we come to a junction point on some of the deciding issues tonight, you have to decide. And it doesn't mean you can't decide more or differently later, but for tonight, going forward, we, we'll need you to, we probably won't vote, but I'll ask you for agreement or not agreeing, and then we try to iron it out from there. So, you have, I'll need you to indicate a preference about what you're doing, because that's how we get commitment working with some people, against, my friends call it getting some skin in the game, as you make an obligation, and out of that comes your commitment. Any other kinds of ways that you would like to suggest in addition to these that we operate tonight? No?
Well, I think that, you know, when we, number five's important, that we make a commitment, we also share why, you know? Because we need to get into why we feel strongly for, for the rationale.
Yes, yes, thank you very much. That's a good one to add, because without the why, no, we don't, none of the rest of us understand.
Yeah.
And we can't correct or modify without the understanding. Excellent. Thank you, Amber. Any others?
We'll do a conference of sorts.
Mike, yeah, because we're already getting close to under 6:30, and I've got us, at this point, five minutes in. So, we're off. Okay. That's all right.
I think Amber, you're saying it as people speak, you know, I think people just have an interview.
Well, and then just go for each section, you know?
Okay, I think, so the two, the two pieces that take the most time on the agenda are the, the shared values, trust, peace, and the protocols, because you'll be in groups talking with each other, and then coming back and sharing with the whole group. And so, you're probably needing 30 minutes each for those, those two, so we'll say others can be shortened, they're a given case.
What time is our break?
Seven.
How, where do we need to be by the break?
By the break, we should be through, through shared values, then we would have protocols and culture, and the latter part, or thereabouts. I mean, we could be, if we can do, yeah, if we can get that far before the break, that'd be excellent. And I'll try to do my part and facilitate and move it along more quickly. But the power is in the substance of the conversation. So, if it's not conversational, we're not, we're not going to get the work done. So, that's one of the reasons, by the way, I shaped the, the meeting tables in kind of a square circular, so everybody's going to look at and hear everybody else's talking, and you don't have to look way down at the end of the table. So, and that pertains to the rule also, but we won't move forward until everybody has a chance to share an idea. So, if you have something you want to say, or share, or a position, or perspective, or interpretation, then all you have to do is, you know, I've got something, and we'll acknowledge you, Mr. Chairman, and then when we're able, and everyone's had their opportunity to input, then we'll go forward. Okay, so, we're, purpose and function, I know you've had some of this already in some of your workshops, and, and that's, I'm not going to do, we're not going to go into great detail about purpose and function, but technically, I was just reading some of your school laws back there about the state of South Carolina, by the way, and I knew you already know this, but just to remind you, one of your primary first-level functions is to hire assistant attendants to manage this school district for you, and help, help you be your professional consultant. And then you also select short and long-term objectives, or you guys call them commitments, which I like, told the people about them, I like the word commitments. Almost as strong as the word covenant. Did that a lot in the Bible, covenant. And short-term, I call, you know, a year or two, what's right in front of us, and long-term, going a little bit further, about three years. We used to have these burdensome things that we did for, to comply with the state, or just because we were in the habit of doing strategic planning, and things that were in the order of five and six and seven-year thing. And nobody ever got that far, in any case, and most of the time anyway, some of the stuff was so obtuse, the plans ended up on the shelf somewhere. And that's one of the reasons you all have redesigned your whole strategic planning process here, to flatten it, flatten organization along with it, and make it more immediately relevant, which I applaud you for, very, very good. Long-term, probably would apply more to things like capital planning, census, data, student enrollment, trans, things, things of that nature. And then adopting a budget, of course, which is an annual. I used to hate that one, a superintendent of Virginia, and I kept trying to get the local government to adopt it, because the state there has a biennial budget, state of Virginia with two of those. And I said, we should do the same thing, it's cool, Mr. Friday, with all this pain, year in, year out, you know? We can do the operations budget, because that has to be done annually, because operational support things can change. But the rest of it, we could do, like, in two-year term. And I went, the school board said they thought it was good, and I went to city council and I said, no, because it wouldn't comply with, it wouldn't be coordinated effectively with the state's biennial. It's one of those good ideas, just shut down, crash. So, those are probably the technical things you're doing, you'll spend a lot of time and energy on those, some of your planning. I know you've adopted your strategic plan going forward, and I've looked at it, some of your portfolio model things, your power skills, for your work and life skills. We may make some more references to those tonight. And let me tell you, folks, because I have enough, work enough out there, with lots of, and have work, with lots and lots of school boards and school board members and superintendents, you, you're, you're guiding school district, you're on the leading edge with your work. And your willingness to pursue the really hard things that it takes to be, I mean, when you say things like, we're going to help or guide every child, not just some, the kids that are the easiest to guide, I mean, you guys are doing leadership-type work in your school district, I think, flagship work. So, this work about teamwork, and things that you can do together, and work in partnership with your superintendent as a team, is all about leadership. So, I like to think about and help develop, when I was a superintendent at least, and since then, school boards, getting them to think about, so, not just as representatives of the community, and the parents, and most particularly, the children, but as leaders. You were community leaders, leaders of the educational system in Lexington County, and that's, that's, that's ratcheting up a little bit higher, but that's how we get up to higher, to high-impact type boards, to view ourselves as having a leading role. And indeed, that's what it is. In part, at least, that's probably why people elected you, say they did. They saw you as a good potential leader for making sure the school system, the school is the way that pleases them in educating their children. And I noted that several of you have school-aged kids in the district, so you do have skin of game, right? I keep in it with my grandkids, because I've got four grandkids, and that's how I keep up with what's happening in their, in their schools and in their school system. They go to the schools in Albemarle County, which is a large suburban district that surrounds Charleston. I was superintendent for six years, so, you know, I feel like I got a little pull there if things start to go wrong with. So, let's talk a minute about, and this relates to purpose and function, and some of the previous trainings that we've worked with the, the School Board Association. Did you have a school board attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, so you know about rules of confidentiality, legal terms, and so on. But about your impact, as that relates to purpose, I think. And for just a few minutes, maybe two minutes, by yourself, like, your notepad there, I'd like you to jot down, what, what do you, just right now, I know this can change and evolve, but right now, what's on your mind about what might be the most important thing that you would like to be able to impact as a board? It can be big or small, just in your role as a board member, and then collectively as a board, what would please you and satisfy you the most in terms of your impact as a board? This won't be great, and there will be no quizzes, so it's, no rights or wrongs. Okay, everybody got something? So, I want you to get into what I call dyads, which really means pairs. In this case, we won't move, we'll just stay where we are, and talk to the person next to you. Share what you wrote, two of you. And then we're gonna come share that as a whole group. Two, 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 you can share, if you mind sharing with him. Okay, if you both, everybody got to share with each other, both got your things? Okay, could you, could you record a few things for us, Mr. Superintendent? Just only kind of a key, key idea, so have a record of it. Okay. What, what kind of things did you all come up with?
Mine's just real simple. Mine was just, I see our role was helping students buy into their own success. And so, it goes along with our vision of designing their own future and helping them be self-reliable.
Yeah, and being, and being aware of that. And, oh my goodness, yesterday when I talked with, or we, I should say, talked about, what, fifteen students yesterday? For a while, they were, I could not believe it, as middle schoolers, they were insightful about things, and were doing just that, buying into, they got it.
Yeah.
And, and I, I don't think it's just a whole group of exceptional kids that the principal handpicked, that he brought in for us to work with, and so I think it was representative, yes. Okay, Brent?
So, mine was to continue to improve the academic performance for students despite the growth, because, again, that's the challenge, because our footprint's growing. And then, you said two, and then develop, the second is to continue to develop students who are productive and win for society.
Exactly, and Well, I, I think you have a start in design, in what some of that may mean, and with your power skills. Because those, when you went out into your community and got lots of stakeholder input from community people and PTAs, and a lot of business people, and he's probably told you about the procedures that were used in doing that.
We were participating.
And you all were involved in it, so you know that, that's what those people were saying. These are the things that we think our kids will need to survive, will even do better than survive, thrive, in their futures, going out into the world. And we know the requirements regarding academics are important, and how their learning related to that helps them. But we also know that it takes a lot more now. And one of the big things our employers tell us is relational skills. When I used to ask my local industries CEOs and captains of industry, they would always say in our meetings about people they fired last month, one of these that we had to let go. It was always inability to get along with supervisors or, and/or other colleagues on their teams. It's always relational. It was never because they couldn't spell Mississippi. M-I-S-S-I-S-S-I-P-P-I, okay.
They'd say, "Well, I don't have conflict," or, "I really am, they should need to say, how do you deal with conflict?" And now, what manner do you want, I guess, right here, how do you deal with conflict?
Boy, that's a zero, yeah, that's ground zero.
You should only be able to talk through how to deal with conflicts, a complex reality.
It is, and I wish you'd heard these kids yesterday talk about how they, what they've learned about how to, what they call a collaboration, which is the resolution to conflict. And I, I thought it was really powerful to hear. It wasn't like they'd been programmed, they just had their own personal insights. We even talked about how they had learned those skills, not just at school, but they could use them with their siblings at home, and maybe even with their parents. And I said, "Wait a minute, we better, we better, the parents aren't trained like you kids are, we better go, you know." It's not fair that you enter collaborative processes and negotiations with your parents, and your parents aren't trained. And they said, "Don't worry about it," they know, and I said, "Okay." So, yeah, and it seems as though, I guess I've been around a long, maybe, yeah, a long time, fifty years in education in one way or another, and things are different. They're so different now, and, and looking like they're gonna be, continue to be more. And it isn't just the stuff, it's the rate, the rate of change is so fast. And it's too much stuff in too short a period of time, you can't, hard to keep up. And that's part of what I think causes some of the conflicts. People have access to different perspectives based on different experiences.
The change, the change is so fast, that it's hard for some of the people to adapt.
You're gonna like what you're doing here in your power skills, because that's, that's, I mean, it's integrated with academic curriculum, but it's, I think the primary intention is that kind of preparation through experience in school, whether they go into college, because they need it there, too. And, or whether they go immediately into the workforce, or military, or anything else. Those kinds of, I think, some people go on soft skills, and you guys, I think wisely thought, let's call them power skills, because they are, they are so powerful. Kyle, what you guys got down there?
I have to lead where others are absent.
Whoa, okay, lead where others are absent.
As a matter of fact, I had a sudden meme over the remote, it's great. So, it's very evident that, license school district one is one of the top districts in the state, okay? And so, when you have the opportunity to have a voice, we've all read the paper, we all know that this general assembly is gonna be focused on education, okay? I would rather see us lead as opposed to just fall in line. You have, when you're on top, you have the opportunity to take chances. And take a chance, get out there. I mean, it's, don't just fall in line, take a chance. It, it may not work, but, but you have the collateral to go back and, and adjust course, change, whatever you need to do. You can stay nimble enough, you don't have to be reckless, but you can stay nimble enough that I think you have the wherewithal, I mean, we didn't get here by happenstance. This district did not just appear out of nowhere. I mean, it's been a successive training that has happened throughout the years, so there's a, take a chance.
And I think your constituents would like, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a representation of your culture and your educational system here, as a lead point of that, and their aspirations and aspirations for their children. And, yeah, I think as a leading district in the state, you have a, perhaps a special role to play in that regard, as you say. Very, very good, interesting, good thought. Is it Garrus, Garrus?
Garrus.
Garrus, sorry, okay.
Kyle's on mine, equity and access, but I would like to see our vision statement put into action.
I'm sorry?
I would like to see our vision statement put into action.
Gotcha.
By empowering each child, by giving them the same opportunities district-wide. We have some schools that are code to the futures on EL, IB, some immersion programs, but I'd like to see every child have access to every program.
Good, and you do, and I love it that you're being vision-directed, so you gotta, you have a relatively new, maybe a year-old, framed, new vision. There it is, empower each child to design the future. And in a minute, I'm gonna, it's one of the more exceptional ones I've seen school systems have evolved as their, their vision, and it's a bold. You talk about being a leadership district and having exceptional results, and being exceptional, that begins with a bold vision. Have to have a bold, I mean, if you use the, if the vision doesn't have some, it doesn't have really punch to it and meaning that people get, even be their own, put their own interpretation on it, then you're not, you've got nothing being held up to aspire for, so like. So, you, so you, what you're, I hear you saying you want to make sure every child gets, in order to fulfill that vision. And it does use the word "each child," empower each child to design the future. So, walk our talk, okay?
Walk our talk.
Good. Tim? Well, you all aren't stealing, you're sharing.
That's because we pass the same school every day, and it's out there on the big sign, empower each child to design the future.
But, and this may be, I mean, I carry a lot of baggage. I started student here in 1958, and I graduated in 1970, and came back and worked for thirty-five years in student.
I call that, I call that wisdom vis-à-vis experience.
I see a lot of things changing, and this is probably, you know, just my old stuff kicking in. But I just like to ensure that every child in every classroom, in every school, in every attendance area is afforded and provided the best possible opportunity for a successful future. And that's probably happening more so now than ever. I know, I saw about a little, at the last board meeting, parts of that that was presented, that the schools were kind of holding themselves accountable for children, and every child, so. Some, some good things happening there, but I just want to be sure that we kind of keep a, keep an eye on that part of it.
I think that's, that's a good one, and a rightful thing to do, and I think you're building structures to give some assurances. I should know this, but I don't know, what is your free lunch rate here in this district? Roughly?
It's gracious, I think it's, I wanna say thirty percent.
Is it, is it, is that, is the highest thirty-five percent? Okay. So, yeah, you got great So, part of your role is moral, and that's a good moralistic thing to be, I mean, because you have the resources, so. And that will mean, probably, I think, maybe Greg's talking about this, you'll see differences in the distribution of resources, because some need more, and need more compensatory assistance than other, yeah, so, good, okay. Mike?
Mine's pretty succinct. I said, "To have an increased interest from our parent stakeholders regarding our plan for growth." I don't think we have enough people signed on, care. I think a lot of people don't care.
Parents in particular, or people in general?
People, well, I think, you know, you could say taxpayers, but parents, parents are more critical, I think, than the general taxpayer, you know. I'd just like to see more people get behind us with what we're trying to do.
Okay.
There's some bad information out there.
That's, that takes some outreach, creating understanding, yeah, and involvement, getting people involved. But it pays off in spades, yeah. Anne?
Check with Mike and make sure I got.
Uh, what, that's right.
Can you read that?
Yeah. If he can read it, that will be
There's just some old lectures, one, and then saying, you switch it, there's a, there's not.
It's a traffic.
Yeah, you pick the traffic, you pick the road, you pick what it is, and, you know. Nor can we police the areas that have school district problems, it's gotta be done at county councils. I guess they want to slow the growth down.
Y'all have, how many kids a year are you all increasing?
Well, we're, it's been a five-hundred since 1988, if you know.
A year?
Five-hundred a year.
So, you're about a school a year, or every other year, depending how big you build your school? That's, that's, whoa, yeah. Has the county given you an assessment of the stratas of the people moving in, you know?
So, we have the grants of where they're, where they're predicted to be.
It's personally with the chamber on where people, you know, what people expect and where they're living. The schools are not going to allow for people coming in.
Is the free lunch rate trend up, static or going down?
It's up a little bit, but I think since the economy took a little bit of a turn, it's sort of flattened a little bit, I think. Because there for a while, it trended pretty fast. We had some schools that went from like fifteen or twenty to like thirty-five and forty pretty quickly. And that was right about the time the economy turned, but it seems like they sort of stabilized schools a little.
This is my, our only mission is to meet the needs with the resources we have at play, like, if we can. The argument to not build schools and slow the growth now doesn't sit well with whatever you're doing, although it gives every kid an opportunity to try and envision and succeed. So, again, that dialogue needs to happen in county councils, I saw it, if a model does it. What our job is, the need is now at your doorstep, how are you gonna meet the need and so you can just sleep morally educated children that have been put into your care, you know, that's our job.
You have to do it anyway, no matter what, you gotta do it.
Don't do as well or slow down, therefore, they won't come.
What is your county governance structure, supervisors, commissioners?
We have county council.
County council, okay.
We're, we're different than other county structures, the, the board is a tax levy, it's an autonomous.
You, you do have that capacity to let it tax. But you do things to keep lines of communication and understanding with your governing bodies together, you know, to some degree?
Yeah, that's what I've always wondered, like, what are we doing to discuss with our county council about impact fees or everything else that people are talking that they want done?
I think each of us have to be reaching out, both for our delegation and council, town council, so that's part of the fun of this.
I think it was, if they can do the left slide or get it through.
No, they can do it at the county level.
They won't even raise money to buy a charter, I don't think they're gonna do it.
Well, for example, I've been working with the chamber, and that's why I sent you the, some, some information about impact fees. We're getting ready to send you a packet full of newspaper articles and other things that we've been researching across the state about impact fees. But it, it's about us trying to continue, but what I, what I've tried to do is try to be a good neighbor, and to be a good partner, and to collaborate and keep people on the bus, and let them know what we're doing. So, that's what I've been working on, and of course, Otis Rawls is a wonderful partner and at chamber level, so he and I have been doing a lot of work.
You do a great job, we're calling for it, so, because our partnership with the sheriff's department, with the town police department, with our SROs, I mean, that's a crucial partnership. And I believe that his team do a great job with that, with the people. And that's in co-mingling of funds, so that's a, that's a real interesting dynamic.
Okay, is that locally determined, that formula for co-mingling?
They want us to take, or they want, they want to be able to report to them, so it's a real, I mean, they pay some, they just pay off.
I see.
In similar structures, is there ever, say, counties who have very similar structures to ours, is there any history of formal-type meetings between, say, school boards and county council or anything like that, or does it tend to be mostly informal?
Well, ours is a little interesting, because we're autonomous, mission one, mission two, the county council sets their tax rate, they have to go to county council, and it's very similar, it's a North Carolina one, yeah. They have to go to county council and ask them to get money for their budget, whereas we can levy our own taxes.
But, but I mean, I'm just talking about really, in general.
And so, they have a very close relationship, whereas probably not on this side of the river, because we're all autonomous, so.
However, I do want to say those who, we presented to them building plans, ideas, to make sure they understood where we were coming from.
County council or the chairman?
County council and the chairman. And, well, no, we did not do an official presentation at the county council, but we did at the county council. And so, we're trying to build that relationship. I think it's important that, you know, partnerships, USC Palmetto College is a good example, is what we can accomplish together is much more than we can accomplish by ourselves. And so, having that partnership is something that we have started to build, certainly like, for example, with the Philly Sewer Project. That was, you know, joint municipal county, we talked about, you know, we presented to them there. You know, so we have done some, I would tell you that we need to do a better job at building partnerships with, across the board. But I will say, we have, I feel like we've taken the real good first steps. but I will say we have, I feel like we've taken the real good first steps about that and tried to communicate that with other people.
Yeah, because you know, the current structure, I mean, it basically allows for like toddler parallel play, where you got, you know, your buddy sitting behind you and he's playing with his toy and you're over here playing with your toy and never shouted too neat.
That's right.
And so it, it seems like if you could widen the sandbox and have a, you know, a delegate, it doesn't even have to be a collective, you know, entire board, entire council kind of thing. I mean, even if, if you were to look at it from a delegation perspective, I mean, it's kind of old school politics, if you go back in the day, you know, and I'm talking long ago, not, not, you know, recent politic structure, but something to where everybody can collectively get in the same sandbox and kind of play.
I agree, I think also with our delegation, we've been doing work, this year we implemented when we go on a board visit, and I know our board visit schedule is a little rocky this year, it feels like we're having to reschedule everything if we move things back, but we've invited our delegation to also attend those board visits.
Amory, so invite the group to come to the rolling semi hall.
So we're really, I mean, I think there, I think we have taken some nice first steps at that, I agree with you, I think it's just important that, you know, we're fortunate to live in this community that really, our main question in this community is how are we going to handle all of this prosperity? And we have lived, I have lived in communities where that was never the case, that they were dying, there were more people dying than were being born, and that's, that's a different place and we don't want to be there, but I think it's going to take teamwork together.
You know, I agree with all of that and you may, because it facilitates, when our problems and issues, when you already have some levels of understanding through joint communication efforts and it kind of greases these kids a little bit, along with creating understanding, since you all can have the capacity to raise your school taxes, maybe you may want to move or think about an intergovernmental day, because you have three local governments, did I hear that right? County council and town, yeah, and the school district, so, and it could be each doing their State of the Union kind of thing, and then maybe breakout sessions or something where they have some sharing around common objectives. You couldn't do yourselves any harm and might get some real benefits from that kind of thing. Amory, did we get you, well, bless your little heart.
Well, and actually, so I tend, when you ask a question like that, I write down the first thing that's popped into my head as my first thing, but then I kind of follow works, I said the first thing I wrote down is teacher pay and retention.
Teacher pay, okay.
I feel like if we could make an impact on anything, that's something I'd want to do. And then that kind of led me into, you know, what our students being high achieving, successful, you know, workforce ready, that's such a big part of where our goals are. And then thinking about that led me back to the teachers and that really, I think my main objective is that we have teachers in every classroom who are qualified and happy and feel appreciated and know they are appreciated. I feel like that if we can get to that.
Yep, yep.
Because everything we want to do for our students won't happen if we don't have enough of teachers in the classrooms. And so I feel like we really need to focus on teacher morale and listening, making sure they know that they're heard and that we as a board value that. And I'm not sure that we, we say it amongst ourselves, but I'm not sure we say it to them.
I get you, you getting all this, Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, you're right.
That's a biggie, I think, you know, they want, they want compensation commensurate with the level and quality of expectation here too, as you say, so that's got to be with it. But they also, and we know, I mean, we know from practice, best practice and experience what make, why do people stay in organizations, stay and work? Sense of belonging, you hit them all, sense of belonging, they like their team, they like the way they're treated, feel like they have an opportunity to be heard, they want to shape their destiny at least some, to some degree, and that comes from being involved and heard in what they're doing and being treated with respect, yes. So, and those, most of those things don't cost money, it's just a matter of shaping structures where they get to have that level of opportunity and involvement. And I think you got, I think you have a good bit of that already, because just from casual observations from being in a school, even yesterday I can, I see pretty happy teachers, but that can be elevated with the kind of things I think you're talking about, so that's, well, you guys have, this is good, you got some good things you've been thinking about and I would ask that you keep this and get it in print from the minutes and see where, yeah, and we'll see where it, there are already initiatives and things developing that might lend themselves to these and/or we need further discussion about creating new inventions and structures to accomplish some of the things you all have talked about. And it's excellent, I think, I mean, I didn't give you homework in advance and say be thinking about what you want to be able to, I just kind of jerk that one on you, but I think it's, it relates to your, this purpose issue and purpose, what's my meaning and purpose and role in serving on this board? So that's, that's excellent. I'm going to move us along, so, thank you for your involvement, I want to move us along so we kind of stay on track a little bit here. I know we talked about the vision earlier, I know that board members who were on when you adopted the new vision have great experience with the process that was used to do that and the vision itself. And I think I put a couple in your packets here, there's something called the importance of vision, probably after the characteristics of effective teams, we'll come back to that, and the elements of compelling vision. You can do this on your, I would check off on the, on the elements, is a vision compelling or not? Does it grab you, do you understand it, does it carry purposeful meaning, are you motivated by it? Yeah, inspirational, yes, moral, yes, relevant, absolutely, for the times we live in and that they're going to live in and conveying a big idea. I think you guys nailed it. Now, why is that important? We talked about that a little bit before, but the sheet before that on the importance of vision. The vision is the directional process for the district. It establishes the pathway to the future, how you're going to get there, it creates an image in the community and your internal stakeholders or your teachers and educators in the district, they all lock onto that. And if it's not purposeful, it's not bold, it doesn't grab them, if it doesn't have meaning, if it's not moral, they'll comply, but they won't have, they won't internalize it, they won't have their hearts in it, especially their teachers. It's just another one of those things. And that's why I think you guys were, I commend you for the process that you used. You want to talk about that process just real briefly? Because I think it was a very broad-based opportunity for lots of people to give lots of ideas and share what their thoughts were with you guys in those.
So what happened for the, for the folks here is we actually started all our conversations with the board, so the board was ground zero, I believe we did that in October, and then we really began to push that out. We had community meetings, where we talked about the skills that people needed, we showed part of the film Most Likely to Succeed. If you'd like to see that film, I have a copy of it.
Excuse me, have the new board members not seen it yet?
I don't know that the new board members have, oh, did you see, did you see it?
Yeah, was it one of the?
One of the community meetings.
If you'd like to see it, you can see the 15-minute clip we showed everybody or you can see the whole hour and a half, it's a film called Most Likely to Succeed. And in that film, they really describe a future that technology advances and as a result, the types of automation also increases and we really have to think about the type of work that we're going to have in the future, because if it can be automated, it will be automated. And in fact, the film talks about that we've actually lost more jobs to automation than we ever did outsourcing. And so when you combine, and they, and they give different examples, they talk about Ken Jennings, the Jeopardy champion, and about how they build a robot to beat Ken Jennings. And, and I will tell you what happened on the Jeopardy episode, because they talk about that there. But then they also talk about the history of public education and where we've come from and how we're still really, in lots of ways, we're still in this 125-year-old system that is trying to answer challenges that we see today. And so I would really encourage you to read that, that was, that film was really foundational for, for some of the work that we were doing as well. And in those conversations, we did a lot with power skills, as you know, we went across our business community, we did a chamber day, at a chamber breakfast one day, they filled out all kinds of stuff. And as a result, when we were working through, well, based on everything we got, this vision just sort of jumped out at us in part of our planning. We also, what we did was we focused all of our district meetings on creating this. So it was really important for me, and I told you all this very early on, that when we talked about a strategic plan, it couldn't be Greg Little's plan, it really had to be our community's plan, our district's plan. And so I feel like our, our school and district leaders as well had a lot of input and driving force, and we talked a lot about what a living, breathing strategic plan needs to be as opposed to what it has traditionally been. The truth of the matter is, is I don't know, have you all done much strategic planning in your workplaces or wherever else, but I mean, Tim probably can speak to it as well, that oftentimes those strategic plans found their way on the website, maybe they look great on the website and they, or they found themselves in a notebook somewhere and they looked great in that notebook and it was laminated and they put a, they put a sheet in the front of it and it really looked nice, and then it may or may not be looked at. I'm not saying that was the case here, I mean, just traditionally, that's a, that's an issue of strategic plans. And so it was really important for us that the strategic planning process was not going to just be about planning, and Rick DeFor says that planning is the illusion of action. So we didn't want it to just be, we put all this time and energy and effort in planning and then got it and said, oh, well, we're not going to do anything else with it. And so what we've done this year is everything, every district meeting that we have now is about implementing the strategic plan. So we've really tried to focus and streamline where we are, because it's important, if we're going to turn that into a reality, we can't do that part-time. Right, if we're going to talk about access, we can't do that part-time. We can't talk about the things that we're talking about and leading and taking risk and, and being there in every classroom at every attendance hall, I mean, and doing all of these things, we can't do that part-time. And so that's really what our focus is and that's a, that's a big push for us, but we, I really felt like we did a nice job of trying to get out and, and get people's feedback and we had community meetings in, I believe, every attendance hall, every high school attendance hall, and a lot of people would come. And so it was a, it just, we got really good feedback on it and that's what we came up with. And what's interesting for me, and I will tell you what I'm excited about, I know you all laugh at me when I talk about, I get excited about the strategic plan, but what I am excited about the strategic plan is I hear it being talked about. Okay, like I hear it in the conversation that principals are having, people are talking about how the strategic plan is driving conversations and coherence. That's new, right? So it's still relatively new, so we're not totally ingrained, and I'd be naive to think that we think about the strategic plan every day, I do, but that doesn't mean everybody does. But, but it is that, it is that idea of how we're going to move that forward, our commitments, we have people who are assigned to the commitments and are making sure, if you'll go back to this sheet of paper here, I mean, just to show you, you know, we have, we have people assigned to the commitments, we've identified these areas as of emphasis, people, we meet monthly on the commitments about where we are and what the progress report is on those. And as a result, we're talking a lot about power skills. You know, it was a, it was a great point you made earlier, we really identified this, and I'll give credit where credit is due, I always, I always give them credit, Dr. Howard Bissell is the one who coined the term power skills, because when you hear the term soft skills, it's like, that, it almost sounds like, well, if you can get to it.
It's a nice.
Soft, it's a nice to have, where the truth of the matter is, is your technical skill is oftentimes obsolete by the time you graduate, whatever you're graduating from, even if you graduate with a technical skill, they're going to take you to Michelin and they're going to train you in something else, right? So your technical skill is oftentimes obsolete, it's your soft skill that will be the thing that moves you forward and helps you evolve and become successful as this future changes and as we're seeing all this stuff happen, boom, 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 right up the next. And so I, that's why I appreciate the term power skill as opposed to soft skill, because power skill, I think, really indicates more what it is, it's about power, it's about your pathway to prosperity, and, and those are the elements that I think really capture there. So anyway, you know, it was, it was done with a lot of intensity, it was done with a lot of urgency, but I believe it was also done with a lot of teamwork and collaboration. We just got a lot of feedback, and obviously you can't go talk to everybody in the community about everything that you do, but it was nice that we got a broad range of feedback and.
And that included your internal stakeholders, teachers and directors. And they, yesterday the teachers and the directors and principal I was working with said to be sure, he said, me who I was coming to work with you all tonight, and I said, please thank the board, we've not had this level, because there's so many things that go on in the school districts, we've not had this level of coherence, meaning that things relate to each other and they're tied together with an, with an understanding purpose at this level ever before, they said, and they're real excited about the vision, and I said, well, it all starts at the top with your board. So they said, please thank them for us. I said, okay, thank you.
What's ironic to me though, you're always as good as your last mistakes, again, we had a very visionary superintendent that had a lot of initiatives and I think people said, we want to, we want to scale that up, we want to narrow that down, because we just can't do all this great new stuff. And we'll probably come full circle and say, it's getting stagnant, we need to do a bunch of great new stuff.
That's right. Well, it, because you could, one of the things I, you can deal with, deal with that with is if it mean, it's not just innovations in isolation, but if, if you build your culture so that it values and works on inventiveness, inventive cultures, that's a different phenomenon from innovations which are outcome product oriented sorts of things. And I think, and I think Greg does too, that that's, that you all are headed that way under the guise of some of the work you're doing here with your power skills and other things, is, because you have people, you've got very creative people who can take holes with it, and then it becomes a part of a systematic way of doing business rather than a, you know, jerky stop, stop, well, we got too many things, we need more, how do we solve this, is it's built in, the inventiveness is a part of the culture, so, and I can see some opportunities here for that, got a tremendous platform, but the value of your.
If I can say.
No, you can't, I got to go on. All right, go ahead.
So really, I think ultimately the goal is about that, is that the culture then says more organically, this is what our needs are and this is where we believe we need to move to set that, you know, create, you know, to solve that need or to meet that need. And so I really would love to see, and I think we're seeing it, is that, and continue to see it, is that the great ideas are coming from every part of the school district, right? And I told you all this very early on, if you all expect all the great ideas to come from the superintendent, that's just, it's not going to happen that way. So we want to make sure that we have great ideas coming from all levels of the organization, because that's the, that's the way it really pushes us forward.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think, at least I hope you appreciate that that, that whole process was risky. I mean, you, how many, how many board seminars or corporate seminars have you sat in on strategic development? I mean, you want to pluck your eyes out, because it's the same playbook, it's the same playbook over and over and over again.
It is.
And when you throw out the playbook, that's chance and it's either high risk, high reward kind of thing.
And it falls with your get out in front as a leadership district, because the state, they may endorse it if you ask them, but it's not what they promote. They want you to fall in with their normal planning process and their planning items that you have to respond to, and so for a while you're going to kind of have to run parallel tracks where you fill that stuff out and send it back down to them.
They didn't like it at first. We had to bring them aboard.
So they could see...
They didn't like the shortness of it. They didn't understand why we weren't going long-term.
Well, because they had never...
They thought it was snail's prey.
Well, in bureaucracies, less is never more. I think it's a concept's anathema to that kind of thing. And you got, they may learn something from you all and begin to adjust their thinking about and their requirements for planning from the state.
They love it once we explain it to them, especially that we're going to do it again and we were actually beating their timeline. You know, we're going to do it three years instead of five.
So, and there was some, there is some danger, I think, in going, taking the path less traveled, as the poem says. But it's probably a good thing for you guys because you all have the capacity to do it and you have HUTSA as a leadership team and board to get out in front. And it ends up, who gets the most benefit from these kind of things?
Good.
It all ends up impacting there with the students. Let's work on the shared values a little bit. I think we might even get through before we take that break in about 15 minutes, 15, 20. And I know, when we worked together a year or two ago, I asked, I encouraged you all to think about being, now shut up about this, about being a more, a vision-driven school district and vision-driven school board. And I'm just saying that again because you've got a good one now that's with a lot of input that's very valuable and valid. And so you can use that as your sounding board when you're making decisions a lot. Is this going to forward our vision? You've got a choice between A or B. Which one is most likely, do we think? And this is the judgment of the board to forward our visions. And that vision driving a lot of decision-making. Now, you all do have shared values already operating. And real quickly, why are these things good? Because we all hold values, we all hold beliefs as a result of those values, and we, some of us, most of us operate by those pretty routinely. Some are espoused. I call them the Sunday values. But yours, we went through a process where you all identified your own and then collectively, so you could, so what do we have in common? So it doesn't mean that what you came up with is there aren't more that you hold individually or in other circumstances, but as a board, you collectively said, we share these values. And what's the power of that? It's because then halfway down that page there, it creates a commitment. Particularly in change processes, there's nothing more powerful, even more than money, than commitment. It's what wins wars. I mean, we went to the moon in less than 10 years from scratch. Kennedy said, we're going to the moon. Not one darn thing had been invented that would take us to the moon at that point in time. And all that technology and all that rocketry and all that engineering bio issues were designed in nine years. That's commitment, folks. Whoa. So belief in purpose and each other and being driven by our commitments is the power of values. Because there's your rock bed things, beliefs that you operate by in life. So we did that, you all did it. These are your shared values. And I put them on a sheet for you. Yeah, it's coming up there. I think it's the last one you did, your last iteration. Yes, February 2017. Here's what I'd like to do. I'd like to group you with, so, hmm. So how many board members were here when the shared values were designed? Three. Okay. To expedite this, I want to put you with the four who weren't, which means two of you will have to be with one of the ones who were here. Do you follow what I mean? So let's see if we can pair off right now. So you were involved and you're not. So there's a group. And your job, this mission should you decide to undertake it.
Houston, we have a problem.
Is to give your interpretation of the process we went through to do it and all that, but just, what do we mean? What do we mean? We have one, two, three, you have six of them, is that right?
Six.
Six, yeah, you have six. What do these mean? And your job is to listen and then ask questions of refinement, interpretation, and what, is there anything you want to add or change or make more clear or different from the one that we started with? Because we have a, because it's a collective, you're a new board. Different dynamics, different people, different backgrounds, different history, not a lot of time yet to work together. And this is a good basis for that, is your shared values. And if you have to embellish some of these or change them, that's fine because they're yours. Okay, so we need Kyle and, would you work with Kyle? Okay. And how about working with Yaris as well? That way, do you mind having two at once? Okay. Okay. And then you two guys go with the guy. Because Mike was important. I remember you played a particularly critical role, I remember. And so, and move back out into the chairs. You don't have to sit right here at the board with the conversation then. We'd do, it would take about 10 minutes to do this. Then we'll come back together and see what you found out and what you think. I'm guessing that as a board, although you've operated by these shared values for probably a year, two years?
Yep, February 17.
Wow. I'm saying like maybe 18 months, two years. Okay. But I'm just guessing that you don't get that much opportunity outside of your own work together to describe or explain what the board's values are when you talk to a PTA or a group or are involved out in the community. Or do you? Not much. So, but you know what they are.
It's dynamic with us because if there are four or more of us, it's considered a...
A board meeting, yeah.
It's a board game. So we have to, you just have to be real careful how you, when you're out in public, what you can do as a group or how we present ourselves. We're very, very, very...
I get that. So tonight, you had some practice at your interpretation of what you all agreed to almost two years ago about what you shared together as a board, about what you value. What were your, in kind of explaining that to new board members, what were your findings? New and old both? We're going to note these things because, not tonight probably, but going forward, you may want to come back and address these things to see if you're good to go on these. Then do we need semantics changing here? Do we need another one? Something's wrong with one of them because you've got to have a collective agreement about it or they don't, they fall apart.
You're going to go to work?
Yeah, let's do that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'm going to actually, boy, something that Jada asked, it's a good question because we have, as a school board, we've got a policy and we've got, you know, school association policy and we've got, we're also, you know, bound by ethics thing. And just about these, the shared values and kind of how they either duplicate or stand alone. And I just, the way I looked at it is that the ethics stuff, those apply to me as, I'm Emery Green, and ethics apply to me. But our shared values are, that apply to us as a board. And then later in our conversation, I described it as that, you know, my family, I hope that when people look at my family, they look at my children and me and my husband, and they can recognize what our family values are by how we conduct ourselves and just the priorities we have. And to me, we are a family. These are our family values that we've decided are what we are going to present to the community. And hopefully, when they look at us as we conduct ourselves as a school board, they can, these values are evident. So that's...
That makes sense to me. And the way you represented those and the way you do your business together is those and also the product of those, which were your protocols.
Right.
None of which are legally enforceable. They're your, like policy is, they are your agreements, really, agreements about how we're going to do our work together and how we're going to relate to each other in our work and what we can hold each other accountable for in terms of our expectations about how we do it and do our work for our children in a rational, intentional, civilized manner. Yeah.
Well, I didn't mention, you know, because Kyle asked, you know, having been on the board for a couple of years since these were created, is there anything that I would change? And actually, I started thinking about this earlier, that I'm really crazy about the word "values." I felt like that's a little hard to understand. And when you said that earlier about how you like our term "system commitment," I would lean towards maybe making them shared commitments. Something that's a little more action and a little, because values is just a commitment. But commitment indicates some sort of engagement with those.
You can do that. I mean, the key here, really more than the community, is the shared meaning together. So whatever you all decide together makes sense to you and you understand it, it's purposeful and meaningful, then call it that. You know, because that's, it isn't an external, it isn't designed for the district as a whole. I mean, it's good modeling for your schools and your teachers, the way they do their business because you want them to do things democratically. And you talked about teachers feeling this involvement and sense of belonging and having been heard and so on. So I think it's a good model for the way individual schools and principals decide to set up their routine meetings and their input processes with parents and teachers and faculties and so on. But the language really is, the power of the language is yours. And really, really, for it to work only needs to make sense among you all. So, yeah, if you want to use the word "commitments." Now, you've got another thing in your panoply of powerhouse here that you call "commitments." All right, so you may want to be...
Did you just use the word "panoply"?
Yeah, I didn't mean that. Just, okay. Don't write that down. Okay.
How long is that?
Listen to your comments.
Yeah. So, but, and you would say, you would mean, I'm going to put words in your mouth here, commitments to ourselves, commitments to each other. Okay. Shared. Okay. Now, we're probably not going to have time to do this tonight, but unless you want to because it's really for your benefit. But for these things where you may have some either semantical changes or even deep context meaning changes, you're going to have to go through that process again. And it doesn't have to be the same, probably a modified version of what we did before. So you can, the reason it's not exactly the same is because you already got starting points. So you don't have to invent everything from the get-go, depending on how people respond. But that's very interesting that, what you all discussed, I think, and should be attended to as you go forward. Because you really built your protocols in large part off of what you believe about, from your values. And other things you believe about how people function and work best in a democratic society, you know, inclusively, transparently and so on. How about another group? Mike, you all do?
Well, I'm kind of on the same page with Emery about that, you know, about committed I see commitment as ownership.
That's what it is.
And, I mean, we sat down and when we created this, I mean, we started with words, you know, these key words. And then we ended up writing this. And, you know, they're committed values. You have to commit to them as a board member or they don't work.
That's true. The values place will come get you. I think those are, yeah, we did start with, so in your processes, y'all, I remember you started with, we had these cards, value cards, and you had to winnow down from about, there are about 250 words in the dictionary that imply value. So they had 50 and they took their 50 and winnowed them down and winnowed them down and you worked with partners and had to get agreements. So it's refining agreement, agreement. Finally, come up with, how many words did we have you all come up with? Seven? Seven or eight? Yeah, that everybody could agree on. But then the words alone don't mean anything. So then they had to fashion those into concept statements.
We would take the words out and we'd have to go back there.
It's kind of a fun, but it's an argument.
It's a great day. I mean, it really was. It was very productive.
Tim, did you have any observations for us?
Just kind of been through this process a lot.
Similar.
In fact, shared with Mike. I was on the first strategic planning team back in 1993. Was it Mary Beth? Or you and Mike?
I'm hearing you. She went for it.
He was talking about, it took a whole day to do that. I think it took us probably two or three weeks to just get down and decide what I believe is worth as a school district. I understand, you know, the difficulty, but I also understand that being an educator, band director, principal, to get everybody corralled into those beliefs and to make that commitment, I mean, that's the most important thing. I think the ownership, when the kids in my band knew they had ownership, that was all the difference. That was the magic. It was theirs, their band, not mine.
Yep. Very good. Thank you. Good observation. Kara?
I asked about self-assessment and how we would assess how we're doing on this.
Good point.
Which I think, you know, as a board, you're kind of always going to, when you're assessing yourself on anything, basically, you're going to pat yourself on the back. But I like what Emery said about looking, people looking from the outside in. You know, she wants people to know that when her kids go out, they see her values. So even, not just self-assessment, but ask others, how do y'all think you're doing?
We talked about this in the previous training, and I talk about it a lot with boards and superintendents and staff, principals. It doesn't have to be a fancy, drawn-up survey thing and done by all kinds of, sometimes it can be a homemade, handmade thing and then you do just what you said. How are we doing? How are we doing on this? You have to say what you want to know. It's not going to give enough explicitities as you get response to what you want to be. You just, you want to know how you're doing? You ask the people that you're most interested in, who are impacted by it, how you think we're doing. I think that's very reasonable. I, something we've talked about, I think with you all, but I know I have with your superintendent, is it relates to asking people how we're doing regarding what we consider the most fundamental aspects of a healthy culture, sense of belonging, respect, really those kind of basic things. I think the school board and school system should probably do that to get feedback from your internal clients about once a year on that.
Like you said, nothing fancy because all the employees know that if you're sending out a survey monkey, something electronic, like, they're all scared it's going to be traced back to them. So, I mean, I would even go for, you know, pen and paper.
No. Keep them simple. There are, I mean, you can borrow from other places where they have these things or make up your own. It's easy enough to make them up. But you have to decide first is what is it you want to know about? What are the things that are most important to you to know about that you want to ask your employees about? And they will tell you. I mean, and these, I mean, you've hired, you've hired really smart, intelligent and talented people in the school district. And so you ought to be listening to them tell you what they think ought to be done. I mean, you don't want to hire these smart and talented, creative, experienced people and then you tell them what to do. That's why you've got the superintendents and other managers making sure you get the best quality people in that you can.
That was one thing that I thought we did really well, we on the board at the time. And we hired Dr. Little. We asked all the employees to tell us what their vision was for superintendent and what they saw. And we had focus groups with them, with parents, with all kinds of the community. And it was very enlightening. And I think that helped us make the decisions that we made.
I'm sure it had a big impact.
The best part was when all 30 schools, or 29 schools, so that all the principals got interviewed. We just sat in faculty's board and watched them interview, because we had three superintendents.
That was fun, wasn't it?
Oh.
With a lot of people in one room.
We learned a lot about what was happening at the school. We learned a lot about what was happening at the schools.
By the questions they asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if it's an open, sincere process, people will, they'll ask the hard questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think one thing, being a board member, you automatically get a self-assessment every two years when the board's in election.
That one.
And I think also the law enforcement is clearly a self-assessment for the board.
You get that one for sure, without question. At the same time, some of these other things, like how your protocols are working, you're going to kind of have to do your own or have somebody come in, a consultant there, and help you kind of, because they, they're, they're dynamic and active, because that's the way you do your business. It's life. It's not something on a piece, you know, just on a piece of paper, so. I would do those once a year.
We need formers, because the election is a summative, and I'd better have a former before we do the summative.
Okay, all right. Well, there you go. That's a good, that's a good stepwise way to do that.
It's not even a retake.
Yeah, a retake.
Retake, retake.
I know I'm working with an elevated board when I know the difference between formative and summative assessments.
Only the ones that have kids.
Ah, yeah, okay. You've heard of plenty, yeah. Kyle, what do you think?
I like, so when I think of system commitments, and I think of all the filters that we run things through, I don't know how explicit Greg was in conveying this to the, to the district, but I'm going to speculate, say he was.
Conveying the board's.
No, no, I'll get to it.
Okay. That's okay.
How we're going to die into ourselves, that we are going to, I mean, the Clemson term is all in. That we've thrown away the playbook, we have created the strategic plan, we have put forth the areas that we find important. And this is the filter that we're going to look at everything through. And so whether it's a board meeting that occurs here, or a wellness meeting that occurs at Pillion Elementary School, everybody applies that meeting through the same filter. So it means we have to do away with every convention that we've ever had. Again, we kind of have to throw away the playbook, and we have to begin to filter it through that lens. I remember one time I had a deacon meeting, and we had kind of gone through a very similar kind of thing, and we started looking at budget. And that's always a fun thing in churches, to look at budget. And one of the questions I asked was, why don't we apply the same filter? So let's do away with the way we do these meetings, and let's start looking at it through the filter of the things that we have listed that we found. And so, you know, if it were me, I would eliminate, we will create an environment like. I would say, we will create an environment that will empower each child to design the future. You're saying the same thing, but you're dying into yourself, and you're saying, we firmly stand behind this mission, we firmly stand behind this vision, and we are prepared to, to change the way we do things to show that support. And again, I don't know how vocal he was when he was having those meetings about, this is now the expectation, but I would assume that it was felt, because you're seeing the product of it. And, and you yourself said that schools are applying it, and they're not doing it under duress. They're doing it because they want to, because they have bought in to it.
At a higher level and faster than I thought that they would, I mean, they just took off.
Right.
And things only do, so if it's a top-down thing, that never happens. Because there's no, people have ownership by them, they don't get it, doesn't make sense to them. Yet another thing we got to do. So that tells me that this is making sense to people at the ground level. Yeah, yeah, good point. Okay, that makes sense to me. I think you all.
And then came after.
How does this?
Go ahead. Did you reflect on it correctly?
Values reflecting the vision, willing to change how we do things to support the vision. Absolutely.
Did you say you were clearly about?
Design the future. I came up with that term myself.
He basically took out the group achievement, that powers each child to design the future.
It's the same thought, sir.
Yeah, he just tied that into number two, because we did that too.
Yeah, that's a great example, though. So our shared values were created in seven years.
Yeah, it's purely a timing flaw. Right, so then the, then the vision and the mission and the commitments, then were created a year later. So what I, I think what I heard you say, and it may be a good conversation for our board in the near future, is to say, how are our commitments that are already here, and our vision that's already here, and our vision, our mission, our vision and our commitment that we've created last year, how are they reflected in the values? Is that, is that, I mean, can I broaden it out just a little bit more besides the vision? I think when people are sitting out here, and I don't care if it's a teacher or a community person, whatever, they see a mirror up there. And so they see us reflecting exactly what the district stands for, both in policy and practice.
That's walking the talk. That, that kind of consistency and alignment.
Vision could be will empower each child to grow and achieve.
Could easily have been that.
It don't matter about.
It could have, yeah. We just turned them off.
We've already printed this poster.
We can change one side versus.
I think you're stuck with this vision for a while.
I like the vision, because we had the same thing. I said, those need to marry. So to your point.
Good point.
The filter needs to apply to everything we do, even if it's something that touches you, you're too prior. And when you're in the middle of it, it's hard to just see that, because we're all aligned it. And so we, you know, third parties, accountability partners for like little words, say, listen, this isn't consistent with that vision, therefore, y'all need to touch that again. Or it doesn't align.
And people will start doing that, as they see you modeling it, and as this becomes more of a reality for them. So be, be ready for that. Where, you know, your actions or things you're considering may or may not match what they consider a forwarding of that vision. So, I mean, and that's part of that risk part, and stepping out and giving away from traditional social conventions.
Well, and, you know, Apple and Amazon, I mean, they're giants, but they're also nimble at the same time. That's why you get a new iPhone every year. That's why Amazon has touched very, basically every part of your life, is because they, they remain nimble. And so it's not the, kind of what Anne Marie was talking about with the slow-moving governmental wheel. They're nimble at the end of the day. And there's no reason we shouldn't be as nimble, that we, we're constantly on our toes, moving. And if we have to change something after a year, that's okay. It's part of being nimble. And I think what I like about that term nimble is, to use the phrase adaptive strategies in terms of a strategic plan, because we, you know, foundationally, we wanted our strategic plan to be able to be a living document. This written-in-stone kind of idea that somehow we can predict what the year's going to look like, what the world's going to look like five years from now, is, I mean, it's archaic. In 1993, that made a lot of sense. But with a rapid rate of change, and really, maybe you could even argue in 2010, that made a lot of sense. But with a rapid rate of change, it has become, if we're not nimble, or not flexible, or not adaptable, people will eventually replace you, just like Kodak or, oh, I think I forgot, you know, all of those. Sears. JCPenney's a good example of that too, right? I mean, they're all not companies that maybe you would not define them as such. And so I think it's important for us, and I also think it's important for us, that as we grow, right, so as we are approaching that 30,000-student mall, that we need to really check ourselves even more so, that we're adaptable and flexible. Because what we don't want to be is this, like this huge oil tanker that can't ever move, and it's so big that they can't, they can't ever turn, that we have to be able to make the decisions that, just like we did when we were a small country school district. And that's one of the, I think that's a critical element for us. I mean, I see that, I see where you're coming from, because that is a, I think that is really, from a value perspective as a school district, I think that's the value that drove our strategic plans.
Okay, good, good conversation. Anything else, Kyle?
Nothing.
Okay. Brent?
So, lots of things you said. On the third bullet, it says, we'll seek truth by respecting the values, opinions, traditions, and beliefs of others. I just introduce roles to, because, again, we all, this is a big dance, all have a role to play. And I always find ironic, and it happens in the hospital all the time, everyone has an opinion about someone else's role, but when it comes to their role, they all of a sudden shut down and don't escape dialogue. So I think, you know, we need to be careful to stay in our own lanes, because each of us are asked to do certain things in this dance. And so we got to be, respect the roles. And then we've spent a lot of time talking about talent development and growing talent. And again, that's one of the things I've been most excited about with Greg's leadership, because, again, we are in the middle of one of the best booms we've had in a while, and employment's very low. There are plenty of things to do other than education right now. And so one of the ways that we're going to continue to fill our leadership positions, you know, at the school level and the district level, which then endears teachers to stay in the classroom with our leaders, because, again, people stay with the leaders, is talent development. So we don't really have a commitment up there of developing talent. And we're spending a lot of time and energy, and we've given Greg very discreet directives about that, that this is a priority for you, Greg, because until we have another recession, that's about the only way we're not going to have a future teacher shortage, other than, you know, all the other things.
Does that relate, Brent, to the, that we, we will prepare our district for future growth?
Well, and I think when we see that, that's a net, but, I mean, we have committed, we're spending time and money developing dynamic leaders.
Well, maybe it might go into resources.
Yeah, it could be there too. Yeah, yeah.
And I, I mean, again, I know it could get carried about while we say this, Greg, but that is one of the reasons we chose Greg. I mean, there came down about three or four things, and that was one of them, so these doors are open.
I'm glad to hear you all talk that way, occasionally referring back to, okay, this was, he's the product of all that effort and work and input, and people that were engaged, the principals and, but ultimately, you all have the responsibility. I'm sure you have plenty of fine candidates reminding yourselves about your expectations for this individual, based on the qualities and experience that he brought, that you, as a reason as to why you selected him. It's a good, it's a good thing to review for yourselves, and they also, as a part of his annual review too, or semi-annual, I don't know. Y'all do annual or semi-annual? Okay.
I hope I'm off the board on that next question.
Well, maybe.
We would have Ed Harmon, I don't know if you remember Dr. Harmon, because I don't guess you'd meet Dr. Harmon, but we would have him pray every time we met to discuss it, because Ed had a direct line, and we needed it.
Okay, all right.
He was a Old Testament, he had a degree in Old Testament, so we felt like he was right there.
Very, highly connected.
And he wanted the right person. I mean, it would impact the entire community.
And then finally, the other fourth bullet, I tweaked there, we'll exhibit courageous service and leadership through open, two-way communication. I think we need to do a better job as elected officials communicating current process, current needs to our community stakeholders. And it's hard. I mean, we hold a board meeting, we're holding this, this is open session, anybody can be here, and we have one constituent this year, so.
And he's still with us.
And, you know, you can beg people to come, but it's all the need generation, and they want things at their fingertips. They want it all filtered down to something that makes sense, because then they start making thousands of decisions around that. But yet, they don't get all the knowledge and the why of how we got to this point. So, you know, these type things are great, and it's a struggle. We've just got to continue to tell our story. So I think communication, we think about through, when I first read that, I thought that through the lens of each other, and teachers, and leaders in the district, and our parents, but it's, you know, our students, our teachers, our employees, our business leaders, our elected leaders, our community, is really, we need to strategically continue to focus on communicating all those statements.
Okay.
But when I had asked Anne Marie about it, because I, of course, know that as well, that's when she explained that this applies to us as a board. So we're having two-way communication with each other.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I have.
When we wrote this, it was, it was internal communication.
Between the seven of us, right?
Yeah, we wrote these.
But if you collectively, if you value, if you value as a group, the, you know, the communication externally, then that's a value, a collective value, and it probably should be engaged somewhere.
Well, then I said, the protocols, you know, I guess that's where we would cover, you know, how we communicate with the public.
That's the one that's totally internal, just for the board.
So the protocols are?
I mean, they're your protocols. No one else in the district's going to own those protocols. You're going to have a lot more connection with people about these value statements, probably, even though they're your shared values of the board, because they're going to relate to them as community people and stakeholders and clients. They would probably like you to do your business according to protocols smoothly and effectively, and with good dialogue, and using democratic processes, but they know that they don't come do that, that's your job. So that's why I call the protocols inclusive for the board only.
So then what are?
We're coming to those next. That's a good segue.
Then what applies to how we deal with the public? You know, because like you were saying, open, two-way communication with, dealing with the public. But then, we originally understood this as just applying to the board.
Because what Brent said was kind of was an addition to that statement, two-way communication and open communication with stakeholder, with community stakeholders, right? And you're expanding that statement, not just.
I guess what I'm saying is, we are committing, to his point, we're committing as a board that we're going to be courageous and leaders and two-way communicate with students, members, employees, business leaders, elected leaders in our community. So with each other and with our community. Because, yeah, I think that's part of, we're all so quick to make a decision, and docs are guilty of this, we make decisions all the time. And so I constantly try to, well, but you constantly try to back people up before they make a decision to understand what the issue is and what the resources are playing. And I think we need to do a better job as a district about sharing what the, giving the environment by which that decision's made versus taking a decision and being critical of it out of context. And that, that's our job as a board.
It's that why part you mentioned earlier. There's an author called, named Simon Sinek, says you should start everything there, first ask why. Or you could say, what's our meaning or purpose here, and what's our expectation, whatever the why is. We skip that a lot, and then, then external groups, of course, and they're not sitting here, and a lot of that isn't picked up, the why part is often not related in the media, the reports, or maybe in the minutes. So, yeah, it's an important feature to try to.
It's exhausting.
It is exhausting.
You got to do it seven times for people to really want it. But honestly, for us, the problem is the why. You know, I think the, the, the hard part is the rub is the how. So that's where, that's where life gets hard.
That is the hard part. We were talking today about some issues related to innovation, and I said, you know, getting ideas is not hard. Everybody can come up with ideas. Yeah, it's the implementation part is where it starts getting sticky and difficult and running into lots of, and needing more creativity and inventiveness to make things work. Good, good, good point. Well, you got it, Brent?
All right, I have got it. I've thought too much.
No, no, it's, that's, this is what this is about. It's about you guys having this powerful conversation. Madam Chair?
Well, this doesn't really fit in here for saving. I think, because I've always been, this is the thing from day one for me, the job is bigger than anyone, one of us. And to this day, there's a policy that I won't remove, and I've never been able to get the votes to do it. And I've been on board eighteen years. And so you, you quickly realize your first agenda goes nowhere if you can't get your, you know, your teammates to join you and everybody be thinking the same thing. So I just, that's the thing, we can have opinions and we can say things, but if we don't have the majority with us, it makes no difference whatsoever. And, and I think the other thing is, is I love that, ask the why. You know, why have things been done that way? Why were things? And a lot of that governs us is part of the laws, the state and federal laws. I mean, there are so many laws that govern us, that there's a lot of things, I've changed overnight. so many laws that govern us, that there's a lot of things I've changed overnight, I could, but legally I can't. So, you know, whether it's hiring practices, or operations, whatever it is. So I, anyway, I just think this job is bigger than anyone individually. You have to quickly realize that.
That's why there's seven of you. I don't think, I think the small, usually, probably the smallest boards are, well, out in the West and some of Oklahoma, you can find small, three, even three, four, five, I, I had a five-member board once in up in the, up in the mountains in the district, and, um, good things and bad things about it, but.
Going to your point, Cindy, you said about the job is bigger than anyone of us. Actually, I was in a conversation with maybe one of our board members, and I was just struck with the realization that school boards, our, in particular our school boards, because of how, you know, with our tax inability, are a very unique government structure, because at different times, we have the role of executive, legislative, and judicial. And there are no other government bodies that can, you know, in the course of an hour-long meeting, hit all those different areas of responsibility. So it's, it's very, I mean, really, I was like, you know, people undervalue, I think, the role of school boards, and they undervalue the, the commitment that school board members have to a good much beyond themselves. Because really, I mean, there's, there's a lot of responsibility on this table. So I just, I haven't thought about that.
An overwhelming, an overwhelming number of people have no idea who we are. They don't know who their school board member is, and they don't care.
And they don't care. That's very true.
Because I'm, I mean, we really do all those different roles we have, you know, purchasing, taxing, and hiring. I mean, we really hit every possible function of government in one box. If you want to hurt my soul, are the people that call me after an election, and they say, "I got the school board, and I forgot to call you, so I just voted for the first three," or whatever, whichever election it is. You're like, we touch you more on minute-by-minute, hour-by-hour basis than the president, than probably our congressmen and our senators. You're a David Locke. And I said, "We should invest a little time in that."
The line share of your past.
Yeah, well, I think if we gave people more opportunity to interact with us and get to know us, like, we hold our board meetings at the same place, at the same time, every month. You know, like, we're complaining that one person is here, but I mean, it's a workshop. But at our regular meetings, all of those people are here just for awards, and they leave. If we.
Every month I tell them this.
Right. If we changed our location, if we changed our time.
At Jane County, we've done that. When this, this has been under renovation twice, because one time I was, just two major things happened, and we actually been out just the same time. It didn't change.
So you went to Lopec, where else did you go?
No, we went to schools. That was before the time. We actually switched around to different schools.
I mean, that was years ago, so, I mean, if it's not working now, yeah. What I'm saying is, it's not working now, so what do you have to lose?
But I think that for all of us for that.
Yeah, other districts do.
After the awards.
Well, maybe, I mean, that's even something to look into also, is moving the awards around. I mean, put them at the end of the meeting, make people sit through the whole meeting. Yeah, I know, but if they want to come, and you want them to hear.
But they don't want to hear that part out of it. If they wanted to say anything, they would say. And that's a good thing.
Well, I mean, and it starts at 7:30, so then, you're not done with the awards till 8:30, and say, you've got to drive back home to Pillion. You know, then you've got a child getting to bed late. So if we changed, if we met in Pillion, and we met at, you know, seven instead of 7:30, maybe more people would come, but we don't know until we actually try something.
Other districts that have tried have seen the same results that we have seen. When we go to the school board conference, and we talk with these other people, and you hear that, and we go, "My ass has questions."
Well, originally, I'd say, "Have two meetings a month than every other meeting needs." So when we go to the conference, I still have to try and see, because it's a very similar district.
I mean, I think it's worth a try, but I mean, I think we could, you know, look back at the resumés. You know, those were open, well-publicized, fifteen or twenty people, that's about standard.
I think that would have been five.
Yeah, I mean.
Either way, we've got people out the door, in the hallways. I mean, we've completely outgrown the space. And used to, I know, down there, you'd go sit down there and watch it on the screen, but you can't even do that anymore. So we've got people here who, I mean, last time I was here, I stood up for like an hour and fifteen minutes in a back corner. Yeah, so we have to address that.
We used to have our Christmas dinners in the staff development room. Everybody that worked at the district office fit in that room. Now they don't fit in here.
Let's put this in maybe the parking lot, and give this to Greg, so he can work on it, and let Andy keep working.
Parking lot issue, thank you. Thank you all for the.
Can I add one other thing I was just thinking about? I don't know where this goes, I just started sticking in here. I was, as we were talking, I've been reading through the system commitments over and over. I think it'd be really awesome if in proof positive magazines, in our meetings, if we had like a little medallion on each of the recognition bios of which system commitment that lines up with. Number three, number two, number four. Just so we can show, I mean, you know, we've got, you know, an Eagle Scout, well, that's power skills. You know, somebody that won robotics, well, that's, they're advancing and ready to enter college or career. And I think that that would be, that would tie that honors and awards section into.
Making sense.
Yep. So, that's my question, I'm going to go.
You got it all? You got it all, Greg? Okay, so we're transitioning to the last piece here about protocols. Thank you all, that was excellent, good, good suggestions, good conversation. Protocols, you can find your, these are your protocols, and these are the ones you determined through yet another somewhat lengthy process. Probably wasn't as lengthy as this year's age. So, just as a reminder, what are protocols?
Standard operating procedure, which we agree, is how we're going to interface with each other in the school district.
Great definition, exactly. And, and so there are things, ways of doing your business together, is the key word there being, you've agreed about that you would do. Now, you could probably maybe come up with fifty, but we, you know, it's, the ones, you, you went after the ones that seemed to be based on prior experiences that you had, that you felt were needed, because of those experiences, you needed specific protocols, or because we knew, like, communication, for example, you knew it was so generic that it would be, you wouldn't want to leave it out. So, they can come from different perspectives about why they're there. Most, most good boards that will function well and are effective have protocols, and they're often very similar, and sometimes they're different because of the specific culture and issues that have evolved, not typically in the past in that culture. So these, these probably need to be assessed by you guys more regularly, even than your, these changes you need to make in your, in your shared values concept. This, this applies to every single board meeting, when they're all together, when you're in the formal part of the, what do you call your open, I mean, not the informal.
General session.
General session, okay. That's, that's, this is what's your governing process for that, along with the policies and procedures and legal requirements that the state establishes for, and things of confidentiality and all those kinds of things. So let's have, this is the same process we just used, and let's have board members that were here and had been operating these protocols explain and have a discussion with those who haven't about those, and net the same kind of value from it in terms of understand, I mean, have you all done any self-assessment on your protocols in the last year or so?
We have, because we've had the turnover.
Oh, that's right, of course. So, so this is a good time, this timely, and don't have to do it all tonight. Let's just have the conversation with the new ones, and we can identify some things if we do, and whatever those are, you can attend to by adjusting those protocols going forward. And let's, let's see, who had two people last time? Mary Ann, Amber, you had them, so, Cindy, you want to take two? Okay, and then the others, just pair up with somebody you hadn't paired with before, like Mike, you did Tim before, right? So why don't you do Ms. Gareth, and Kyle can, oh, you're going to do two, so you would do Kyle and.
We've already paired up.
Oh, you have, okay.
Okay, all right, Jim, pass me the card.
You want to do Tim and?
Kyle, somebody.
Okay. Back, and, so you've got the list in front of you, they're not on the wall. And.
That's what he said.
So it's, so it's a discussion about, what does a protocol mean? If you want to talk about how it came to be or why we have that one. And you might add to it now, since you haven't done an assessment here, how you think it's working, if it's fulfilling its desired effect intention, rather. And then, the respondents say, "That's not clear to me," or "I think we should add this to it," or whatever, just like we did with the shared values. Okay, and we're, we got about, we have about a half hour left, so you can have about maybe fifteen minutes to do this. We'll use pretty much the same process and have you identify as a result of your conversation, suggestions, or changes, or confusion, or this looks good. And then, the superintendent's going to note these things, and we're going to come back at another session to iron those out. So, who wants to go first? Mike?
Go ahead.
Am I volunteering?
Yeah, you volunteered. It's just like the army, you know, you volunteered.
Yeah.
Okay. Whatever you all noted that.
Tell them what to do.
Your observations and suggestions, and if you have a favorite horse, we'll bet on it.
Honestly, I'd rather pay.
Okay, then.
Okay.
I'm going to volunteer, but I'm going to let Brent give our recap, because he loves to put it all down.
Cool. Okay, Brent.
That's why you volunteered.
Madam Chair? Okay, so, bullet two, as a board trustee, we'll be an active listener to concerns and facilitate communication to the superintendent's office. We just added in fellow board members. So, you know, to ensure appropriate time to follow up. So, you know, I think, I learned, you know, I had people reaching out to me regularly on a weekly basis just to stay in dialogue. So, you know, if we're only reaching out to each other when there's a problem, it's hard to develop a relationship. So that when there is a problem, the relationship can survive. And so, I've been trying to get into a habit of just create dialogue with each other. So, again, and then, obviously, then there'll be common themes, and, you know, if the four of us say, "Hey, I'm hearing the same thing." Then we raise it to the superintendent's attention and start working it. So, and so, and then, number three, as a board trustee, we'll engage in, we just said, "Open communication to avoid surprise," because sometimes it's three or four, five people listening. Bullet number four, we said, "As a board trustees, we'll own the collective decision-making process, will support decisions made by the board and administrative team unless a decision's made, and will respect the majority decision, well as the minority dissent to further." And what I shared is like the Supreme Court, you know, they do an opinion when they make a decision, but there's always the minority reflection. So, I think our job as, you know, adults and representatives of our community is to, you know, recognize the majority decision, but also respect the minority opinion, I guess is the way to say it.
Yeah.
And then the last bullet, the only thing I, I change, is, as a board trustees, we recognize this role of superintendent to manage and direct, I wouldn't say the day-to-day, it's the operations of the district, because we're in strategic planning, we're in capital planning, so it's not just the day-to-day, but superintendent, that's who we landed on. And then, our role as board, I mean, we, I trust Greg, I mean, I trust the each of us, so I think, we all trust Greg, but our roles as board is to empower the superintendent to perform the duties for which he's been contracted.
Wow.
So it's not a trust factor, it's, it's an empowerment. And as soon as I take away that empowerment, then why the heck are we paying them, you know, extra nine dollars when all of those are here for those reasons?
That's right. I get your money for it.
That's all I get.
Why you hired? Yeah.
Did I miss anything?
Nope. I mean, I just, we talked a little bit of that big paragraph, talked a little around it, and we like, talked about the second sentence, and we changed it, and we deleted it, and then we just kind of skipped the whole paragraph altogether. It, it, it's a little weak to me, the whole paragraph.
Next to the last?
Yeah.
It's a big one, mm-hmm. Do you want him to note that it needs a re, that it needs further examination?
Yeah, it needs some tightening up, or some focus, I don't know, it kind of covered a lot of things.
That's the, so I guess we should have numbered either.
I don't even know, it might even be good to add in there that we will adhere to the laws, the state and federal laws that dictate our, dictate our actions, our behavior.
Yeah, that would be great.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Because I think a lot of people don't realize how many laws that we have to follow.
Did you hear that, Mark, about adding something about hearing to laws? That would be.
Got it. Anything else, Amber? Okay, good.
Oh, Amber, you have a lot more things.
Okay. Y'all did a lot in a short amount of time. Another group?
We, the funny thing about our group, that Tim and Kyle are trying their best to get off social media. So they said they will not be posting, and in fact, they, Kyle just came off Messenger, and they're thinking about coming off Messenger.
Well, I've been off Messenger for.
You've been off Messenger.
Two years. I would just get too many medical questions, and it's the improper form to ask a medical question, because I can't respond, I can't insure HIPAA. And so, but at the same time, this is a paid customer. And so, to some degree, part of you feels obligated to do it. On the other side, I have to adhere to law. And so, it becomes that risk-benefit kind of evaluation. And ultimately, I said, "You know what, I would rather just completely walk away from it and say, 'I'm sorry I didn't see that, and even if I did, I couldn't respond.'" And so, it, it, it is knowledgeable to some degree, but at the same time, it just kind of shuts it down and says, you know, "I'm sorry. I just, it's not a form for me to respond." And that, that was specific to medical.
But you look good, Norm.
Yeah, flip flops don't do it.
You know, we, we went back to that, the thing we talked about earlier, that, you know, when the board votes on something, and it's the majority opinion. It goes back to his point about respecting that majority opinion, understanding that. And I just, I'm not real sure social media is the place to conduct board business. I don't mind, like, if you're congratulating Luke Clamp on being National Pressful of the Year on the, I mean, that's fine, you know, but in terms of talking about the way a program is running, or the less, the group of students is handled, I just don't think that's the appropriate form, because, for one thing, I think a lot of that needs to be turned over to the superintendent. It's just, it's not, that's not our role.
Yeah, it goes back to governance.
Right, governance versus management. And there's a very, you know, there's a pretty distinct line on that. And my theory on this, and Greg, cover your ears, but if, if you are so unhappy with the way the superintendent is managing the district, and you're not happy with the hiring decisions, or the rollout of programs, I mean, that has nothing to do with the teachers, it has nothing to do with the principal, you need to work for the superintendent, and that needs to be, so you, no matter what you say and do, the superintendent is the one that needs to handle that. And you have to work with that. But actually, to be honest, I think we felt pretty good about these. They, we really, and I like the wordsmithing y'all do.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if you, I guess I look at it from a, sort of what's my distal factor, after looking at these. And, one, negative, two, positive, three, negative, four, positive, five, negative, six, positive, just in terms of the language. And again, I think it's a matter of exactly what you're talking about, the wordsmithing. And again, I think it's a matter of exactly what you're talking about, the wordsmithing. But can you, can you spin it to where the negatives become the positives? Because you don't... To me, when I see negatives in protocols, I see an operation of fear. And I hate the idea of operating in fear. I think it's the worst leadership you can provide is to operate in fear. I mean, I'd rather operate boldly. And so, if that means we have to change just even the way it feels, and to me, positive comes off much better and much more bold than negative.
More powerful, really. And you, any of the several that are, have negative connotations can be... I mean, you can easily turn those around by...
Yeah, I don't think it was...
It's language.
I think it was just trying to drive home a point, and it becomes, it becomes a negative spin or a negative connotation.
I remember working with the board at that time on these, and they were... So they were all driven by specific points. Most were not fear of something that could possibly happen in the future. They were all based on prior examples, or prior incidents. That they were trying to say, "Look how much trouble that caused, look how unprofessional it was," whatever. So that's probably how they got the negative. But the board can, you can easily put, whatever points you want, you can say in a way that's more inviting and positive about it, and put it in that context. I think that's good. If you can work on them some anyway, then why not? It's up to you guys, they're not my protocols.
I would never agree not to post or reply on any social media. Number one is in direct opposition to a board policy that says, "We will seek to keep the citizens of the district regularly and thoroughly informed through all the channels of communication." But not only that, I mean, you're just stomping all over somebody's First Amendment rights when you're telling them, "We don't want you posting on social media." And like Mike and I talked, of course, you know, you scroll through Facebook, and you see people complain about this or that in some kind of public forum. Well, I mean, you don't have to comment on that, because if you do, like you said, you're opening up a can of worms, you know. Mike could tell them, hey, you need to go talk to someone, so it would probably be best if you just didn't comment on that thread altogether. But as far as my own social media, that's the only reason I have social media. I mean, there's nothing personal on there. I mean, I have a board page and a personal page, but my personal page was originally started to air my concerns. So I would never agree not to post or reply on any social media.
I think you all are gonna have to, when you get back to this, have a discussion for sure about that one, what was the original intent? Is that still a primary intention, or has it morphed? Or is it still there at all? Or does it need clarification?
Well, I think, I'm sure that she just needs to explain that it's her opinion, and that she's not representing the board, and she says this.
Therein lies the problem, because people in the community don't understand that.
Right.
That's a hard one.
I think they know, but I'm not.
It's tough, you know, you cannot not be a board member.
Right. Well, I just asked Kyle and Tim, I said, "If you had the Walmart Publix thing, where you walk in and Cindy Smith has disappeared, and you are a Cindy board member." And Tim said he went to a funeral today, and he was Tim board member. You know, he kind of, Tim Oswald's were faded. So it's an interesting dynamic, because we can say we're not a board member, but we truly are. I mean, people do us that way.
I look at, and I have a personal social media account, and I use it for a lot of, you know, my kids, and making fun of myself, and questions, and things like that. But I have a number of friends that work with Office of Shield, and they still to this day have a corporate policy for directors and above, that they cannot have social media accounts, because of their role in that company. And so, I mean, I think, I understand having a personal account, but if the... Once you become a board member, your persona changed. And to continue to use that personal account as Jada board member, not...
I tried to open up another account for Jada board member. And now I don't hardly ever use my personal account, so...
You all have board account, I mean, you don't?
No, I have a campaign account, but I haven't used it since the day I became a board member. I feel like if you think something needs to be communicated, and it needs to be come from the board, you need to work through Dr. Little and Miriam. And it needs to be a formal communication that we all agree upon, whether it's a press release, or a, an announcement, you know, for example, that we've made a hiring decision promoting someone. I think that is better coming from them than from us, because I just don't think it's right.
Well, and it gets back to what Ryan and Kyle were saying earlier in our values discussion. When we post things, the "why" is completely absent from that broadcast. And so there's no context. And so something that is completely harmless and positive can be misread by somebody that has never been at a board meeting, has never been in one of our schools, their kids are 50 years old, and they misconstrue it, and so they assume it's negative. And it may not be negative. And unless you spend all day, every day, setting your record straight and correcting their misconceptions, you're letting wildfires burn on issues that is gonna expend energy from people that need to spend their time on something else. I mean, we, I mean, we just need to make sure that when we, when we do post things as, you know, board contact, that the whole story is told. Because otherwise, it's damaging to our district, and it's damaging to the rest of the board.
Tim, what's your take on this? Someone that worked in the district, I mean, you get beat up by social media all the time, the van director, principal, so where do you land on that?
Well, I, there was probably very few faculty meetings that didn't come up. Be careful what you post, right? You're, you're not a private citizen, you're a teacher.
Right.
You know, I'm an administrator. Regardless of how you wanna think about it, the perception sometimes outweighs reality, and you gotta go with perception. And we just, it was my, it was my rule, we just stayed off of social media.
Did you ever have a time where a board member and your team are posting something on social media, and then talk, how that affected your students and your faculty? And, because, again, we don't wanna be a distraction for our employees.
Well, Cindy and I, and Kyle talked about that a little bit. We kind of lost trust, I guess, in things like that happening as a faculty, or...
Lost trust with who?
Well, with the system that we heard it through social media.
Gotcha.
We didn't hear it from Greg Little, or, you know, officially as it should have been.
I got you.
And this, you gotta be careful what you, what you read on social media and believe.
Right.
Thomas Jefferson said, "Don't we have everything you see on Facebook?"
For me, the hard part with social media is, I think the purpose is noble. I think the purpose of disseminating information, be it what, be it a conversation in Publix, be it a telephone call you get, an email, whatever it may be, you're trying to disseminate information, and you're trying to meet people where they're at. And for much of the public, it's on social media. But we live in a world where we haven't answered all these questions. I mean, you're seeing new litigation that has never happened before in the history of mankind, and we don't know how to handle it yet. We don't know how to address it. And so to me, and again, I think we're all talking about matters of preference, and, I mean, you can argue matters of preference day is long, but, you know, one preference may... It doesn't matter, you're arguing preference, you're not arguing true and false. And so, to me, when I encounter a situation where I'm in uncharted territory, that's when I tend to feel bad and be very conservative, and say, "Okay. I feel like I'm kind of walking on the razor's edge right here, and I don't wanna screw this up. And so I'm gonna walk very slowly, very deliberately, and if... I'm always gonna lean more towards the conservative side." But again, that's not preference, that's not... Brent may have a different preference. He makes a, "Huh, Yosemite Sam," you know, kind of go with the gun blazing and get it out there. That's the hard part for me with social media, and it's a question I haven't answered yet, is how do you, how do you handle that forum in the title which we do? Because the purpose is good. The purpose is very good, of disseminating and getting that information out there. It's again, that "how" that we run into that is so challenging. And that's where, that's where the rubber meets the road in my life.
And in this case, was an excellent point, that you're, you're trying to fashion protocols that help you all do your business effectively, together as a board, and for the school district as a board, because you're the policymakers for the board, and for the system. So the protocols, I mean, there's some things you can test via potential protocols, or the ones that you have against, and that's, and that can be those kinds of things that I just said. So, and it may be that you have a good one, or you just don't have it written correctly, or there are missing parts, or it's not completely thought out, you know, so that's... And probably maybe, I mean, that's, you've operated a year, over a year, with these protocols, but you've not had an opportunity to do what you're doing right now, which is, well, how effective? So I'm gonna ask you that question now. How effective, I don't remember the original intention of this, but you all do, I'm sure.
Well, we lost a board member because of that.
You've lost a board member? Oh, yeah, okay.
I remember posted something that was completely inappropriate on social media, and it made the national news, and that board member had to disown it, because it did not reflect the values of our community.
That person do that in spite, did you already have the protocol on that? Okay, mm, okay.
Something else that kind of, if you don't mind, Jay, I'll make sure that one's in there. We've given a board book prior to our meetings, and it's with, you know, the agenda, the who's gonna give the awards, at-risk policies that we're gonna be reviewing. And I noticed that Ms. Garrett scanned most of it and posted it before the meeting. And I really don't have a problem doing it after the meeting, but I do have a problem doing it before the meeting, because we haven't even had a chance to discuss it. And I just think that's kind of, I think just giving the board the simple courtesy of it going out publicly on Tuesday night, and then go on and post it, you know, scan it and post it right after that. But I think that's a courtesy to us as a board, not to post things until we've all had a chance to review and read, because it's conceivable that somebody might not have been, might not have gotten their board packet, and something, posted something, and they all of a sudden get called or questioned about it, and they didn't even know that it was out there. And it hasn't really been released, because we have not discussed it out here in open session as a board. I don't know, what do y'all think about that? Do you think that's...
Well, I mean, I can tell you what FOIA says about that, that once it's sent out to board members, it's a public document.
It is a public document, but I'm saying it's a courtesy to your fellow board members.
I think it's a courtesy to our constituents who we serve.
Well, but is that, to post it, that 39th versus Tuesday?
Yeah, I think it's a courtesy to our constituents who we serve. And right here, I mean, communicate effectively, the board is responsible to the community, it serves and represents. It is the duty of the board to carry out the will of the community in matters. The board trustees will keep the citizens regularly and thoroughly informed through all channels of communication, and our board doesn't do that. And that's what I ran on when I campaigned, is that I'm always gonna keep you informed, I'm always gonna keep you in the loop, you're always gonna know what's going on. And our district and board as a whole, like, we just like to keep things to ourselves. We don't want anyone to know anything ahead of time, so no one has any time to discuss anything. And I mean, what I put on there is something that's available 30 minutes before the meeting, which me, as a constituent who came to the board meetings for years, I would have loved to have a chance to read those policies before I came, and give my feedback to the board members before I got there that night, and said, you know, "Well, in this policy, you know, here's what I think about that."
With the, with the policies, though, we go through two or three readings. So the reason we have those readings is so the policy is announced and read through. If you have any questions or concerns, let board member know, we will discuss it again at the next meeting. So, I mean, you wouldn't be able to vote, I mean...
We wouldn't vote that night, either.
Right, I understand that. What I'm saying is, I, as a constituent, would have loved to show up to a board meeting fully prepared, knowing ahead of time what's being discussed, being able to read through all those policies, and then hearing what the board had to say. But instead, you have to get here 30 or 40 minutes earlier, where there's a link available, download it on your phone, and then sit there and try to read through it real quick.
But the policies that we cover are in the agenda, listed by policy number.
Why couldn't we just send out the board packet?
Yeah.
Put it online?
All of the board packets are not included. See, and I, I have been talking about that. It has like student samples, and...
Right.
And you do this, see, right?
That's a standard.
If you would be telling people where they would be located, would it say where?
That's still public information. Yeah, that's public information. But it's still, if somebody could request that and post it online if they wanted to...
Somebody could request it, but in terms of security, it's not... Would you want your child for people to know your child's gonna be on...
Well, that part's redacted, their name is, but yeah.
We could not give them that.
Oh, I have that. I got it through FOIA request, and your attorney had to give it to me.
No, not the student sample. We couldn't give location, details, all that, that wouldn't be used.
Wendy?
Yeah, it's a, it's a security issue, and it's their, see, like, their name, their grade, their school, all that is perfect directly in front of you. It's protected, and it's a law. So it's a totally different law. We have to have a parent's permission, just in an honor order, to release the child's name, grade...
Right, I get all that, yeah.
And their identity, and all that, because that information is covered in a different law.
Is, I'm looking at, I'd get too much into your business, but the agenda goes to the... When is that released to the media?
Usually, we get on Fridays. We have a board meeting on Tuesday, and usually on Friday, we get what we call our board packet.
Okay.
And the cover is the agenda, and then behind it are any policies we're gonna discuss, awards that are gonna be given at night, student travel requests, if there's like a bond resolution for a budget item. We're given all the pages of that, and then we're given the balance of the budget for the, for that particular month. That's generally what we always receive it.
Does, so which part, or does the whole packet go to the media?
Yeah, just the agenda.
Only the agenda? Okay.
But the board gets that, and then Ms. Garrett's this past, because she just got on the board. She scanned part of the board packet and put it up Saturday night, before the board meeting on Tuesday, before like, Emery or Emery used the word announce, before we had a chance to announce the policy change, and even vote on some of the things. Which, I don't have a problem with the agenda, and I don't have a problem with when we leave that night, going home and posting it at that point, but I think it's a courtesy to us as board members before something's due and they discuss, that we just wait. We just wait until Tuesday. I mean, what's the difference between posting on Saturday night, or posting it when, you know, you got home on Tuesday?
Well, I think that's a good item to add to the agenda, and then we can all vote on it, since we can't take a poll here and say, you know, it wouldn't really go.
All right, so you're gonna, you're gonna have to, this is gonna take some fleshing out, and probably some wordsmithing to get at what you need to get at, the way you need to do it. And then, because we, it would take us a long time tonight, probably, to do this.
What I've heard, I've tried to capture some questions that maybe the board needs to answer. So social media, we'll bring up, up to Facebook, we'll bring more of a competition.
Yeah, and that goes beyond board agenda stuff, that's very large, yeah, social media, yeah.
Why does that need to look like? How do you meet people where they are? How do you people... Are those the, the, the guiding questions about social media?
Good synopsis. Okay. Any others? Right now. Your protocols, these can come up, I mean, you'll have, I guarantee you, something's gonna come up, and you'll say, "Gee, I wish we had a protocol for that," you know. And then, if it's something likely to come up again, and it probably will be eventually, design another protocol, or amend the one that you have. And you can't have one for ev, I mean, you could have, you'd have 150 if you tried to think in advance of every potential issue that might be avoided or settled by a protocol, but...
Hopefully, somebody's having a what?
Ooh, miracles, are you talking about miracle protocols? Yeah. Ooh, I never thought of that. It'd be interesting, were she here, it'd be interesting to hear her perspective about that. Okay. Okay, so I'm, we're gonna skip, we're gonna go, the last part about culture, I just really wanted to talk to you about your last handout about the characteristics of high-functioning boards. And you're doing these things along with also some of the effectiveness of effective teams. You just did one. You engaged in a conversation and an unfiltered about conflict around your ideas. You did it openly, and you did it well. Okay, that's, that's teamwork. You're doing tonight, what you've just done, is high-impact boards develop their capacity to learn and enhance their, their own... to learn and enhance their, their own work and their governance ability and performance and skills, and teamwork, and regularly, you can't just do this once a year. You guys are, you have too much to do, and you got, what you do is too complex and has too much impact to only attend to it once a year. I know there's things getting away, and I know you got a thousand, but I'm just encouraging you to try to do it more regularly. And thank you for your good participation.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, and I think you all, I've got some real progress tonight in your good conversation, and I think you'll have some more. And to that end, I turn the gavel, where's the gavel? Back to your superintendent.
Yeah, all right, so I took my dad to see the musical Hamilton in early December as sort of a, a way, he's, he's suffering from some memory issues, and I wanted him to see that before that got too bad. And there's a song in that musical where King George says, "What comes next?" And so, that's what I'm here to talk about, what comes next? So, one of the, one of the things that we'll need to look at is, where do we wanna take our protocols, where do we wanna take our shared values, and how do we wanna craft those and come to some agreements on those? So, I'll, I'll sit down and talk with some of our SLT to try to kinda come up with some ideas about where we'll put this in over the next coming months. Keep in mind that started in February, we actually have some call meetings as opposed to workshops and those kinds of things. And so, perhaps they could go there, they could go in that second meeting, we have time to do some of those things in February, March. And we're gonna do some experiments with our, with our two meetings anyway, just to let everybody know, you know, we talked about presentations, we, you know, our, our awards are great, and you have to have, you know, the awards are probably my favorite part of the whole deal, right? Because that's your, you're celebrating all the wonderful things and the hard work, and I'm always amazed in our awards that, I mean, we had a karate champion, we've had somebody grow a watermelon that was 55 pounds or whatever it was, it was Lucas Reynolds, I believe that kid's name, I mean, it was Unblue, I mean, you just get all these different kids that show up with amazing talents. Will Oxner always like raises award-winning honey, or, you know, I mean, you always get, and you're just like, wow, I didn't know that was a thing, and, and, you know, I found out one time, we have like the, the second-rated nationally, the second-rated barrel horse racer in the country that goes to our schools, I mean, it's.
You covet those future farmers' American jackets.
I do, the FFA, I'm gonna talk my way into an FFA jacket before it's all said, just understand that's gonna happen, that corduroy is tough.
They're designing their future.
That's right, absolutely. So, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna try to do some things with the awards, perhaps you put the awards one time, you put, you know, we can talk about putting the presentations one time, we're just gonna do some experiments with it, so I'll need your feedback on that. I mean, that'll be how we wanna do that, but that's really gonna kick off in February, February, March, April, the, the second one is really a board workshop, but May then also falls into that category. So, we're gonna do some things, and then we'll need your feedback about this board last year, ask for some additional meetings, and so, is that still the will of this board? We'll need to talk about that as well, so.
Well, I think we didn't ask for additional meetings, because we already had one.
Right.
We just asked for a schedule upfront.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, we could get them on our calendar.
We can meet a week from now.
That's right. So, so we're.
This has got way, I, I personally think so, what do y'all think?
Well, it's Amber's idea.
Yeah.
Well, we've always wanted it. She, her exact words were, too often, it's like trying to drink from the fire hose.
So, so we're gonna, so you're gonna see some of that coming up. Again, what you've seen so far in terms of the second meeting has been more of us doing our business, trying to, you know, as a new board, but starting in February, that's gonna really look like district business over, split over two different meetings, so we'll see how it goes. We've not really experimented with that before, but anyway, so my, my point of saying that was not to talk about the meetings, the point that I was saying that was, we'll take this conversation, and we will follow up on this conversation, and then also as part of that, we'll need to look at, if the board is interested in, where do we wanna have a checkpoint in terms of our protocols and our, and our values? Tonight was a great example of that, because it had been some time, the context around, even some, well, number one, it's a completely different board, but the context even around the protocols have changed, it's been two full years since that's happened. And so, as we talked about values, but your protocols really should have, I think, some flexibility to them, and you should be willing to say, "Hey, this no longer works for us," or, "Yes, this does work for us," or, "Hey, here's what it, here's what it looks like today, and, and how does it morph and get better?" So, we'll be, we'll be putting that on your calendar, so just be prepared for that, or that'll be my big to-do from today, and, and we'll start knocking out some of the other, some of the other things we talked about tonight. If there is nothing else.
So, there, do we have a serenade to the students next week's board meeting? Is there a, weren't we gonna be serenaded at the January meeting in order of board appreciation, or has that been set up?
Maybe we did. I mean, you should do it during the board meeting.
Somebody mentioned in December that it was gonna be in June, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, everybody got the information about the Monday, the rolling, the Google rolling study hall.
And I'm sorry, and I wanna apologize that that rolled out, no pun intended, rolled out a little late.
No, it's not.
I'm not sure how that, it really just kinda got mixed up a little bit, but.
I think you let us know about it a week, a week and a half ago.
Okay, just wanna make sure, all right, just wanna make sure everybody had that. But that will be a hard start, just to let everybody know.
You, for your picture, it's put everywhere.
From the beard.
On your obituary, Tim.
All right, then.
Yeah, and does anybody have any additional questions of Dr. Little or Dr. Overstreet?
Congratulations. Still on the young blood.
Well, let's, let's give Dr. Overstreet a hand, and thank you for journeying to, down to the lower Carolinas. And, board, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Do you have a motion from Dr. Powers? I have a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is unanimous, and we are adjourned, thank you, board.
Aye.
I think you should, 'cause if you hurry home now, you'll.